Check, check. There we go. All right. Call the order, declare a quorum, and we'll do the flag salute with Chief Coy and invocation right after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Pastor Cohen, come up to the mic for us. Thank you.
Let's pray. Dear Father in heaven, as we humbly come to you this evening, I'm thankful for the men and women in this room. Thank you for their heart to lead and serve their community, their city, and the people in it. God, I pray that you would inhabit this place this evening and give us all the spirit of wisdom and discernment as these leaders seek what is best for the people you have placed here. Help us all to put the needs of others above ourselves and the good of all before any one thing. Even as we pray, we know that you love your children more than we ever could, so please lead us, guide us, and direct us to love your people well. Thank you for your boundless grace, in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
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 Thank you. Enjoy the little league.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
All right. Item number two, presentation of Oklahoma Department of Veterans Affairs. And Purple Heart Society? Do you want number 13 first?
Just the Purple Heart Society tonight. The ODVA is rescheduled.
Okay, just 13. Okay, so item, we're gonna move up. Item number 13, discussion of possible action on approving the city to be a Purple Heart City. Councilmember Steele.
First for item two, they're gonna tell us about the Purple Heart Society, and then we'll do the proclamation. Yeah.
Come on up and tell us about the Purple Heart.
Good afternoon, everyone. Being a Purple Heart City means that you recognize all veterans in your community and that you support American veterans, not only the Purple Heart Combat Wounded Veterans like myself and Colonel Pete Peterson. The head of the Veteran Council is here with me. We have our Purple Rose, Linda Steele, who's one of your council members that we met. And in our family, we put you on our National Register, so when you go to the Oklahoma page on the National Register and at our Hall of Honor in Ithaca, New York, the cities, towns, and stuff are listed forever. Once it goes on that brass plate, or, well, we're kind of tied, maybe it's 10, but we do a nice plaque, and it's listed there forever, so anyone that visited from Oklahoma can look and they will see the great town of War Acres on there, and they will know instantly you're a veteran-friendly community, you respect your veterans, you honor your veterans, and you're a patriotic city. So that's what an award means to my family. As State Commander of the Purple Heart, it's my honor to attend this and to welcome you to our family of Purple. Three years ago, when I started as State Commander, we had 13 cities in Oklahoma and counties and stuff that are Purple Heart Cities. We now have over 650. I think you guys are 649 on the list. We have one after you that we will do on Saturday, the city of Talalqual. But what it does, when someone comes through your community, the signs, we can help you get the sign. It just immediately, when I go into a town and I see a Purple Heart City sign, it makes me want to do business there in that community. I know that they respect and love our fellow veterans who have given a lot. So really, it's a symbol of your city's dedication to the Purple Heart. Usually, the cities have between 1 and 3% of veteran population, but we think we're an important part of our community because we're damn sure patriotic.
Absolutely.
And we damn sure will do whatever we can to promote your city as a Purple Heart City. So as a Purple Heart Commander, I'm grateful to be here, to meet the chief, fire chiefs, all your city council people, that I know your dedication to your city, and I'm very proud to be here today with you all.
Thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate it.
And I have a plaque. You would like me to present it once you do your vote or whatever.
Wonderful. And, you know, he's, one of our former council members, John Nip, he was a Purple Heart recipient.
Yes, sir. I knew that.
Yeah, he's a good man, so thank you. So, item number 13, is that right?
Yeah, he said that you had a plaque as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, let's get the, let's go ahead and make the approval of it first.
Oh, okay.
Then we'll do it. All right, item number 13. Discussion of Possible Action on Approving the City to be a Purple Heart City. Steele, do you have anything else to share?
I just wanted to add that acknowledging us as a Purple Heart City helps to acknowledge our 1%, which is 128 War Acres citizens are veterans. We do have a very active American Legion post here in our town, and I think it just makes sense to be a part of this community, so that's what I would like to add.
Absolutely. With that, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right.
Von Thayer.
Yes.
Morris.
Yay.
Prince.
Great.
Steele.
Yay.
Douglas.
Yay.
Myers.
Yay.
Truby.
Yay.
Evans.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right. You said you have a plaque?
Colonel Pete Peterson, the head of the Veteran Council, and I would like to present this plaque. I'll put my eagle down so I don't smack anybody. It says, "The Military Order of Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed upon the city of War Acres for your dedication for honoring American Combat Wounded Veterans, becoming the Purple Heart City, presented by myself, the State Commander, and the patriotic members of Oklahoma Military Order of the Purple Heart."
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You guys stick around for a little bit?
Thank you.
Will you gentlemen be able to stick around for a little while?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect.
They will nod your way.
All right, we'll do it one right after we're done.
Do you want to do the wave or?
You could. Thank you, gentlemen. We're very honored to be recipients of being a Purple Heart City. Very wonderful. Thank you, sir. That was me. All right, item A, approval of the minutes of the regular 2020, April 16, 2024, regular meeting. Sorry, consent document. Individual items may be deleted from the consent document for discussion under action under item number four. They have a motion. Coy, do we need to do anything with that?
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about that.
Yes. Under the fire department expenditures, the Conrad Fire Equipment for $7,672.46 can be eliminated. That one should not be approved because that is going to be included into the purchase of the new truck. They're not going to bill us second for that.
And we actually already have removed it. It's, a check did not get printed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent document.
Thank you.
A through G. All right, thank you. Myers.
Evans.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Truby.
Yay.
Von Thayer.
Yes.
Morris.
Yay.
Douglas.
Yay.
Prince.
Yay.
Steele.
Yay.
Mayor.
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, received reports from staff. Chairman.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to recognize all the employees that make the task on the monthly report possible, the parks, the streets, sanitation sewer, Mike Woodard, Cheryl. We actually secured a pool. We installed a fence and, around a dilapidated fence and a unsecured pool, so we got that secured and cleaned up, so.
Looks good, too. Thank you.
All right. Fire chief.
Okay, thanks for the opportunity to speak. We do have the new engine in the city. It's at the Conrad Fire Equipment where they're making some modifications to it, so we should, we hopefully will get our new fire engine implemented next week. We're really looking forward to that. Another news that's not so exciting, we responded to the tank battery fire the other night, and it was during tornado sirens and hail and everything else, and our firefighters did a phenomenal job of assisting Bethany in being out in those conditions. But during that event, I went to the fire station to get Tower 22 because we needed more three-inch line because we were going across an entire field using a ground monitor to fight the fire. And when I did, the storm sirens were going off, and over a dozen people arrived at the fire station ringing the doorbell and banging on the door. And I just make a public announcement, one, do not drive during a storm. Two, don't come to the fire station. It's not more safe than whatever structure you are in, and somebody might not be there. So I don't know how to get that message out any more clearly, but we may not be there to open the door next time. I certainly wasn't going to turn away all the children that came rushing in, but it also delayed me going to assist and take them more hose, so bad idea.
How many people do you think were there?
I would guess 18, probably. They all came at the same time, and then more came. And I said, and I kept having to use my translator because I was like, where are these people coming from? Where we came from? And I was like, tell them to stop driving when the storm sirens are going off. That's a terrible idea.
Maybe put it in the newsletter and on Facebook, just.
Yeah, we'll have it translated to Spanish.
Don't come to the fire station. I don't know.
Okay, thanks for hearing me.
Thank you.
It was concerning the other night.
That is concerning.
I thought maybe after City Hall was demolished, they wouldn't keep coming, but.
Well, fire stations mean safety.
Yeah. We just might not be there, though. It was just rare that I happened to be there. I mean, I was like in a transition.
Yeah. Well, and I know after we have our new fire station in, we'll actually be donating our fire, we'll be donating our old fire engine to OSU OKC, right? So.
Yes.
That's gonna be pretty cool. So, all right, Deputy Chief.
Just a couple things. Of course, I want to say thanks to our officers. I've had some training lately, and it reminds you that the officers see things on an average that we call an average day that most people in this room will never see. And, you know, just always kind of have them in your thoughts and stuff, because, I mean, there's days that are definitely harder than others for them. Kind of a couple highlights that we've had in the last month. You guys have the letter from Captain Peters about OK Culture. That was a joint deal between our Investigations Division and Naval Commission, and that worked out pretty good on that. They had about 1,114 calls for service. All those arranged from, you know, multiple violence calls to just alarm calls. The Flock, as always, seems to continue to pay off. We made four arrests, sorry, five arrests last month with Flock, recovered multiple stolen cars and stolen tags, and we actually had one four o'clock this morning. That person's now in Captain's Hill, too. So Flock does great. As you can see, too, kind of y'all, so y'all can see the Flock numbers, 916,000 plate reads in a month. That's just in our city, and that's only in six locations.
Yeah.
We'll let you know the traffic.
Yeah, that doesn't count Northwest Express and 39th at all.
No, it does not.
Yeah, triple that. It would triple that number, probably.
Probably would.
All right, very cool. Thank you so much. City engineer.
Just a couple things I wanted to highlight on, on our report. The work has begun at 63rd, Northwest 63rd in CAPS for installation of the traffic signals. I know we've been waiting for a year and a half to for that to get started, but they had, they did start work first this week, so you'll see that going on. They do anticipate that that construction will go faster than number of days that we had allowed. They feel like it's probably a three- to four-week project, and they'll be complete on that. We also have interviews coming up for the MacArthur sidewalk that runs from 65th Street north along the west side of MacArthur Boulevard, so those are coming up next week. And so after that, you know, the design will start on that sidewalk. There's an item, two items on the agenda tonight, one related to striping at an intersection of 63rd and MacArthur, and then also a, another application for a TAP grant, ODOT TAP grant, to actually continue the sidewalk to tie Oklahoma City. It's a joint project, and I know that there's a resolution tonight on your agenda. So that's all I have.
Thank you. The principal from CAPS texted me today. Is this what I think it is? So they're very happy about it. It is. That's what I told him. He's very happy about it. All right, city clerk?
Get to enjoy the auditors being here the rest of this week and the first of next week, and we should hopefully by the June meeting have the final report.
Awesome.
As soon as I get it, you'll get it, so you can start looking over it, so.
And a great wedding this weekend. And a great wedding this weekend.
Yes.
Yes, all right.
My son got married this weekend, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
City attorney.
The only thing I'll add is if you were paying attention to the agendas for the Plank Commission, you'll note there's only one item on your agenda from Plank Commission, but the commission had two. The second item was withdrawn by the applicant. They're going to resubmit it at some point in the future.
Thank you. City planner.
So like Craig stated, we have a resolution on the agenda tonight for that ODOT application. That application is due at the end of this month. I'll get that submitted as soon as your resolution is approved tonight. We are also applying for a federal grant called the Active Transportation Infrastructure Improvement Program that can go towards sidewalks and bike lanes. That's due in the middle of June, so I'm going to be working on that over the next three weeks. Additionally, CLS is finishing up the Parks Master Plan. They've been working on writing that since we did our public meeting. That should, I would anticipate, hopefully be on your May agenda, but at the latest, more than likely June.
Since we're at May, probably June.
Right.
June or July?
I was thinking it was April.
Dang.
I'm a month behind, or a month, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, one of these meetings in the next couple months.
All right. Thank you. Dakota. All right, item number six, final public hearing for discussion of possible action for you subject to review for a commercial retail store countertop approval or disapproval concerning an application for rezoning the property. UCR1 Town Center. Can I make a motion and open a public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, just for the minutes, the applicant is here. For ease of reference, some of you may think that this looks somewhat familiar. It's because it is. This is an application that you previously approved back in July of '22. Per the code, if work doesn't get started on an item like this that's approved within 12 months, then it reverts back. The approval's lost, so they're coming back in front of you to get approval for what you approved back in July of '22.
Thank you.
And it's the granite countertop, just showroom.
Showroom, not.
It's a different crop, by the way.
No, it's still 5814.
Bottom's 5808?
5808 was the second item that was on the Plank Commission agenda, but that was a separate application for a parking lot, which the application was for a parking lot. They wanted to also have a commercial building on it, which is part of why they withdrew the application and, as well as other concerns, but that's a common ownership of the properties, but different applications.
Dakota?
All right, so this application was brought before you guys, like Matt said, in July of 2022. Nothing has changed within the application itself or within the master design statement or even in the site plan. Everything is exactly the same. It's important to note that this is for a granite showroom. In the master design statement, it says that no manufacturing whatsoever is allowed, so no cutting, no polishing, nothing of that type of work. So this will just be for a granite shop. And one of the important parts in the application that was brought up the previous time was that we are, or part of the application, is to waive the 120-foot frontage requirement on 50th Street. So the frontage on this lot is 85 feet as opposed to 120, which was written in the Town Center overlay whenever that was approved. So everything's the same in the application. It was previously approved in 2022. I'd be happy to answer any more questions if you have them.
Will there be granite storage?
I believe in terms of some granite storage, yes, but it should just be the slabs that they're going to show. But if the applicant wants to come up.
I'll ask them when they come up.
I think the applicant said at the Plank Commission that they would probably have a few of the unfinished slabs as sort of just displayed to show, you know, before and after. But as many of you that were on the council may remember, the question of whether or not they'd be doing the manufacturing and the work on the slabs was a very big issue back in 2022. This application, I mean, it's a simplified planned unit development, just customized zoning. It wouldn't have one of the traditional zoning districts applied to it, which for those of you that are newer to the council and the Town Center District, you can't rezone through traditional rezoning. You have to go through a PUD or a simplified PUD. So for them to get to C3, they couldn't go to C3, they had to go to a simplified planned unit development, but it's C3. Their design statement, the PUD itself, would not authorize any of that work. It'd just be for retail sales.
And also, for those of you that weren't here, the Plank Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. A few members absent.
Was that to include waiving the frontage?
Yeah, the frontage, yes.
That's what I was gonna ask for clarification. You said it was 120. That was already waived or whatever back in '22?
Correct.
Yes.
So 85 is what it's gonna be.
So for a little bit of a quick history lesson on that, when the Town Center Overlay District was created, it said you had to have 120 feet frontage, either on MacArthur or 50th. And of course, the very first application that we got, not 120, wasn't 120 foot.
Yeah.
The Plank Commission rejected it, sent it to you guys, well, to the council at the time, based solely on the 120 foot. They didn't get into the merits of the application. The council felt like maybe it should reconsider that, so they both asked for an amendment to the ordinance to make it waivable and sent that application back. Ultimately, that application never materialized into a development, but we amended the ordinances to change it from a hard 120, not waivable, to, it's 120, but it can be waived.
Okay. So we would have to rewaive it.
Right. When we get to that point, towards the end of this item, it would, if there is a motion to approve, it'd be a motion to both approve the application and waive the 120 foot.
All right. Have a motion for opening a public hearing? Or do you have any more questions?
I have questions. Okay, there is a residential house to the.
East.
East of it, and I was curious, why did they want to put the driveway next to the house rather than next to the church? That's gonna be huge trucks bringing in giant slabs next to someone's house. And I know from my house, when a big truck comes by, it shakes my whole house, so just curious about that.
Right. I might go ahead and have the applicant come up if you guys don't mind.
We need, we need a motion.
Because I can't remember the exact reasoning for that side. I don't know if it was related to drainage or not.
We need to remember to do healthcare, yes.
Keep hold of one.
Hello. Here's Mr. Vasquez. He's the owner of the property and.
And just like last week, if you don't mind, just state the address so that they get it for the minutes.
What was that?
The address.
State the address. Okay. 5814, Northwest 50th, War Acres, Oklahoma. Thank you.
You heard the question about the placement of the driveway?
Okay, so the first time they submitted, Mr. Vasquez submitted an application or a master design plan. They had, they did have the building on the opposite side next to the house, but it was advice, it was advice by someone in the city. He's not sure who the architect spoke to, to move the building and make sure that it was next to the other commercial building. So that's his understanding, and that was the reason why the building was placed next to the, next to the church.
Dakota, are the setbacks different on that side?
Yes.
There won't be a lot of, sorry, I'm translating, so that's why I'm going.
No, you're fine.
Trying to listen to everybody here. So he says that there won't be a lot of trucks, a lot of trucks coming in or out. Mainly, the samples that will be there are gonna be smaller, and some of the bigger samples will be only delivered once every, every so often. Not very, it's not like it's gonna be a weekly thing or even a monthly thing. He's gonna have some bigger samples just to show color variations in his labs and the smaller samples that people can take home and compare.
All right. Dakota?
So I'll go ahead and jump in. I apologize for forgetting why this was placed on the side, but the reasoning was because if we place it on the other side against the residential property, the setback was greater, and it wasn't possible to fit the required drive. So we wouldn't be able to fit the 30-foot drive that is required for the truck in the dumpster for Public Works to be able to get back there and empty out the dumpster.
And Dakota, just in case anybody wonders what a setback is.
It's the required amount of space between a property line and a building line based off of the zoning right next to each other. So I believe if we were going to have that building put against the residential side, I think the setback is maybe 30 feet, something along those lines. I don't remember the exact.
It's narrower when you're abutting commercial.
Correct. So there's a, I believe there's a site-proof fence that's already there, and so we can have the building pretty much right next to the fence.
So the setback doesn't affect the driveway?
No, it affects buildings.
So commercial to commercial versus commercial to residential?
Correct.
Okay, so let me see if I understand the process. You're gonna have, bring in small samples to put in the showroom, but you have another place where you can get.
Various sizes of samples. There won't be any distribution made in or out of the building. It would be only a retail showroom for concrete, for slabs.
Okay, but you make the sales, and the sales, the tax comes to War Acres.
That is correct.
Okay.
Anything that is delivered somewhere else.
They get the tax.
That is where the tax goes.
Oh.
So unless this, this type of business would be, you would go into the showroom, find the granite that you want. They would bring it to your home. If you're in War Acres, we get the sales tax. If you're in Oklahoma City, they get the.
May I ask the applicants a question? What percentage of your sales do you expect to stay within delivery area of War Acres?
Not much. So he does have a shop, an industrial shop in Oklahoma City, very close by, actually. So he says that's where he'll do the delivery and the production of the slabs. This will be a showroom where his clients can come in and see the product and decide to buy it.
I understand. First off, where is the shop that's in close proximity to the city of War Acres? What's the address?
Okay, 2620 South Meridian Avenue.
Okay, and out of that location at 2627 Meridian Avenue, where you currently have a showroom, and people come in and pick their selections, and you're shipping to other locations, out of the amount that you're shipping, how many of those are shipped to the city of War Acres?
So he's, he hasn't had a retail shop here in the city of War Acres yet, so.
I understand. I'm saying, I'm saying, if we're going to allow you to have offices here, a showroom here, and if we're, if someone comes to your showroom, and let's say they live in Edmond, then the city of Edmond collects the sales tax on that. Correct. So my question is, is what percentage of your sales of your proposed shop in the city of War Acres do you expect to stay within War Acres?
So in the past, he's sold about 40% of his business here in the city of War Acres.
Okay. Thank you for your answer. Thank you.
Can we move to.
Yeah, Evans.
I have to apologize. I wasn't part of the decision in '22, but I was part of the original variance that was requested when the Town Center was put in, and they were trying to put a multiple residential unit in a very narrow lot, very similar to this lot. Getting all of the clearances and getting the trash trucks, getting the dumpsters serviced, getting fire equipment there, it was all very constrained. It was very hard to get that in. That's where that 120 foot came from. That's how we got to the 120-foot frontage. It would be a little different if this property went back and opened up and had more room, but when you're constrained on both sides by that 85-foot width, it's very hard to put a retail shop with truck traffic in a lot that narrow, in a residential lot. I mean, it was, it was never designed for commercial. It was designed for a house, and that's what was there previously. I think that's what's there. I've got a lot of concern about trying to stick a commercial endeavor into an 85-foot wide lot.
John, there's no, there's no manufacturing going on there. This is strictly a show.
It doesn't matter. The truck traffic is still there. It doesn't matter, the truck traffic is still there.
Well, let me, let me ask this, probably to solve the, solve the, the technicality on that. Chief, uh, Coy, can your fire truck get through a thirty-foot driveway?
Yes, I mean, it's, it's, it's less than a lane.
Okay.
It's longer than thirty-five feet if it was gonna be lengthwise, but it can, it can
Yeah, okay.
Right, and, and just as a refresher, we this application came up in twenty-twenty-two and went through several rounds of planning commission. And I believe a couple of city council meetings in which similar concerns were raised, and so, um, changes to the site plan have been made to accommodate the trash truck, the fire truck, um,
Trash truck is still back in the back?
I believe so.
Next to the houses?
Judy?
Okay, it was right, it was moved back to the west side, I believe.
Still on the back property line?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, but there, correct, there's no, there's not a street back there, so
Alright.
There's still homes that back up to that.
There's yards that back up to that.
There's, which are attached to homes.
Well, but they're really far back, that's why we went through all this.
Eight AM to five PM.
I look for a motion yet for opening a public hearing?
Well, the, for the public
You have to open up the public hearing still.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Yeah, uh, Montaire did.
Myers?
Yes.
Montaire?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yay.
Douglas? We're opening the public hearing.
Oh, yes.
Prince?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Steele?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Alright, do we have anybody from the public that'd like to speak on this? Would, would you like to come up to the mic, please?
The house that sits on that property, is that going to remain there or is that going to be demolished? Okay.
It's the first, uh, it's the first one that is actually bulldozing to redo.
For those that don't know, in the town center, one of the concerns was the conversion of residential houses into businesses. So in the town center district, that's one of the things that's prohibited. So anytime a residential structure, property is being proposed to move to a commercial use, you'd have to demo the residential structure.
Anybody else from the public?
Glenn, did you wanna, did you, this is your opportunity to speak your mind about the whole, yes. No, no, it hasn't. No, okay.
Make a motion to
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second, thank you.
Evans?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Montaire?
Ready.
Douglas?
Yay.
Prince? Steele?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay. So, this is where we discuss amongst ourselves, yes.
So, can I start?
Please.
Thank you. So I think a lot of thought and input has been put into the town center overlay. And I said it last time when this came up, that I think we're undermining that whole philosophy by cramming ten pounds into a five-pound bag. And I really don't care for the trash can being in the back, being that I live in such a situation where I hear them at three, four AM. Um, I have concerns for the residents in the area. That is all.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I just have a problem with the trucks driving by, because when they drive by my house, um, on the street, it just, it shakes my house. So I just think next to a residential house, having a driveway with giant trucks coming through is not a good idea.
I don't believe that there'll be giant trucks driving through very often, and I mean, they said maybe once a month, they would deliver the bigger stuff.
Yeah, not even once a month, they said. They're gonna have the initial setup, have the showroom. And then not much truck traffic, unless he gets like a new model or some new color or whatever that'll randomly come in. So the truck traffic shouldn't be much.
Correct. After initial setup, that's, I mean, I, I've bought granite for years and I do go to a specific place to go look at everything, and then they have a shop, and his is on South Meridian, correct? So, and that's where it all comes, that's where all the noise is. It's very minimal, it's a showroom. It's no different than a tile space, a place to go look at cabinets, a place to, you know, it's no different than any of those.
And it brings contractors here. It brings
Lunch nearby.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so Mayor Godwin, so, so that I make sure that I, I'm completely understanding here, if, if someone enters their showroom and says that I would like to order granite countertops for my remodel on my home, my personal home in War Acres, that so long as it's within War Acres, and that's the address of the person who's ordering it, then the city gets to collect the tax, correct? Correct. Okay, but if someone walks in and they're from Edmond, Oklahoma, and they order the same granite countertops to redo their home, the city of Edmond gets to collect the tax, correct? Correct. Okay, that's what I wanted to make clarified. Yes.
I mean, by, and what if that person who lives in Edmond is, wants to come and invest in other properties here in War Acres that they saw because they came and picked up some granite here?
Well, I'll tell you what, we're all
Opportunity and probability goes both ways.
It does go both ways, but we have to think about what is absolutely, I mean, he's had forty percent of their, of their expected sales out of this showroom will quote-unquote, and I emphasize quote-unquote, go to the, go for residents of War Acres coming to order it. Is that guaranteed with an absolute certainty? Quite frankly, with our demographic in this city and our economic demographic in the city, that is not guaranteed. Absolutely not guaranteed.
But it didn't stop this council from putting up another used car dealership that also doesn't bring us
Which was an absolute mistake.
Also, if you consider
Hang on, one second, the applicant has something he'd like to say, please, thank you. Stop breaking stuff, Pam.
So, uh, when he purchases, uh, slabs from a wholesale place, he pays, uh, taxes in the location where the wholesale, wholesale place store is. So this will be the case. He will charge, uh, for installation in the city where the installation will take place. But the sale of the actual slabs, the sales tax for the slabs will, will, uh, you know, the transaction will be done in, in the city of War Acres, so the, uh, sales tax will go to the city of War Acres.
Oh, that's good. That clarification.
Clarification there.
Is that right, Pam?
So there are two processes, uh, uh, the actual purchase of the slabs and then the installation, which is a different
Like contract labor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Very good clarification.
Anything?
I think there's some
Clarification from Pam, is that correct?
Confusion. If you go to a lumberyard and purchase lumber, let's say you go to Home Depot and you buy some lumber and you're gonna build you a shed in your backyard, they are to charge you, when they deliver that to your home in War Acres, War Acres gets the tax. If the, say, Home Depot was here in War Acres and they delivered it to my home out at Cashin, I pay whatever my cash in tax is. War Acres wouldn't get that money either. If I go to their showroom and buy granite and have it delivered to my house, I'm gonna be paying the cash and sales tax, and I can tell you, not just from the city side, but my husband works for a lumberyard. He delivers shingles all over the state, and they have to keep track of every single one of those locations because that's where they have to remit the tax to.
Right.
His lumberyard is in Oklahoma City.
Right, so
But the tax is paid wherever, point of delivery.
Point of delivery, so if it's not in War Acres, then their company has to pay the tax for wherever point of delivery is.
Whatever.
And remit it to that city. Be it Edmond, Norman, Del City, Midwest City, Yukon, Mustang, doesn't matter.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
He was saying it the, uh, the other way around.
If you, if you buy it and take it with you, you pay local sales tax. If you buy it and have it delivered, you pay the local sales tax of wherever you're, you're having it delivered.
So, let me ask you this question. So this is probably a weird question to ask. So, if they come to your store, they buy it there, and then you have a subcontractor, not you as your company, pick it up, 'cause they're a separate contractor as an individual, then wouldn't the tax remit to us? Because it's a contractor picking it up and taking it, not them as a company taking it?
If you're akin to going to Home Depot, buying a bunch of lumber and having your contractor with you to pick it up, at that point, the, you're, the customer's taking it.
If you actually take it from that spot, if you walk in and you purchase it and you take it with you, then we get it.
Okay.
But this will just be a showroom, so there's nothing there to pick up?
There's no guarantees.
So maybe this is the question. Uh, or, okay, I, I, I'm gonna get my house redone, I wanna get some granite from your, your, your store. I've got a contractor I'm gonna be using. Do I come and purchase it and you guys deliver it? Do I come and purchase it and my contractor picks it up and brings it to my house? How, how does it work?
Now, with it being, it being modified, it picks up from there.
Assuming the contractor, you'd be paying the contractor, contractor would gonna make the purchase.
Yeah, he'd pick it up from his warehouse.
But if it's a showroom, they wouldn't have anything to pick up.
Yep.
You go there and look at what you want, but they have it actually stored somewhere else where it's being picked up.
Yeah.
And I don't know how the tax commission would treat that, if, is it point of sale? Here, or is the point of sale?
And that's a good question.
Okay, so what was the question again? So, uh, if someone comes into the store and, uh,
We're, we're debating on the, uh, merits of the Oklahoma Tax Commission.
Okay.
That's what we're doing. They haven't, they, they need to be beaten more with a dead horse stick, um.
I do have a question. Let's do hypothetical. I come, I, from you.
Jim, can you use your mic?
She used your mic.
Thank you.
I come by, grant from you, my contractor comes pick it up. He gonna pick it up at the War Acres shop, or is he gonna pick it up in your South Meridian shop?
I was trying to, they have a, three wholesale company in Oklahoma City. So they only sell for a specific person if they like big, big investment. So what I'm trying to do here in Oklahoma, in War Acres, it's build my shop, then people come give this lot from me in War Acres and then I will sell it to him. I don't wanna send it nobody else on the wholesale store. I'm trying to get it like wholesale store.
But do they pick it up?
They pick it up with me and they pay, they pay, they will pay in my store.
Oklahoma City or War Acres, they pick it up?
War Acres.
No, War Acres. I'm saying Oklahoma City, but it's not, it's War Acres.
So what, so what I would be purchasing, it would be at your shop, not at the place it gets manufactured, but at the shop?
Yeah, correct. If I charge you, whatever I charge you, you gonna pay to me, you not gonna pay to the store.
And do you deliver it, 'cause granite's heavy?
Yeah, I, I, I bought it and then I deliver it to my shop, but you make the transaction over here.
When I buy it from you, do I need to take it, or are you delivering it?
No, I have to deliver it to you because you cannot handle.
Okay.
No, it's, it's point of, point of sale.
Well, yeah, yeah, okay, and, and since that wasn't in the, in the mic, just so it gets repeated. If, yes, if I'm a contractor and I come and purchase it and I have the ability to take it with me, then yes, it would be at the point of sale because I'd be leaving with the granite. If however I go, if I'm the contractor, I'd pay for it, but then have it delivered to wherever the job site is, then it's gonna be the point of delivery.
Um, so with that being said.
I think we better wait for Scott to get back.
I don't know. I'll take a motion to, for the item.
Oh.
So you got two options. Uh, option number one is
Before you go on, I just wanted to, there was a gentleman in the audience who lives in the area. He evidently was too shy to speak, but he was opposed to it and, in the aftermath of what it'll do to his residents and the amount of noise and whatnot. Is that correct, Mike? He talked to you about it and talked to me about it. Um, so just on his behalf, I will speak his mind since he was too
Do you know, do you know what his address is?
He backs up on the alley, to the other side. He, he lives on the next street, which his yard backs up to the area.
Yes. Okay. He already has all the dumpsters from Abel. Anybody else?
Buffer there because you have the church.
Alright, what's his name? I was trying to find the address.
Glenn, I didn't catch his last name, I know his first name, Glenn. There's a list. Oh, yeah, he may be on that.
He should be.
He should be on that mailing list.
So Forty-Ninth Street, same address, just on Forty-Ninth Street.
There is a Forty-Ninth there.
There is.
Roger found it.
It goes directly to Forty-Eighth.
What's his first name? Lynn?
The diff is Forty-Eighth, there is no Forty-Ninth.
Wonder if it's under his name.
On those, on either of those addresses behind there.
Forty-Ninth Street? Mm-hmm. Forty-Ninth?
No, it's Forty-Eighth. There's no, there's no Forty-Ninth right there.
Forty-eight, okay. Might be under someone else's name. There is a Forty-Eighth.
And so the council knows, since you're looking at the mailing list, those go to the property owner.
Right.
Which is why you'll see addresses that
Oh, he could be a renter.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know, appreciate it. So on item number six, I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve.
Okay.
As stated in item number six.
Including the waiver?
Including the waiver, as the planning commission recommended.
I'll second. I do not have anything that the planning commission recommended, so I don't know what that was.
It was approval.
Just approval, period.
Approval with the
I thought there was something to do with
There's approval with the waiver. Uh, they, they talked about the issue with the manufacturing, but it's didn't need to be a stipulation because it's not authorized in the PUD, so it wouldn't be allowed.
I just Are they waiving the one-twenty?
It'd be part one in the, part of one motion.
Okay. I had that in my other notes, but then I was like, well, maybe not, okay.
Morris?
Yay.
Steele?
Yay.
Prince?
I'll have to ask, you know, what the motion was, 'cause I could not hear it.
To approve it, um, as, from the recommendation of the planning commission, waiving the hundred and twenty foot.
So approving it and waiving the
As it's written.
Item six.
There you go.
Uh, I'm gonna abstain.
You said abstain?
Abstain, yes.
Douglas?
No.
Montaire?
Abstain.
Myers?
Nay.
Tribby?
Nay.
Evans?
No.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion fail, uh, motion, yes fails.
Alright. We'll get in touch later. Thank you. Alright.
Thank you for coming.
Item number seven, update on War Acres animal control enhancements by Mike Schmidt slash Myers.
So Mike's brought in a nice slideshow. Um, we, we know we've hit you guys with a lot of stuff on the animal shelter and we wanna show you, it's all done, and these were all the things that were originally planned for the animal shelter, but due to cost cuts in building all the buildings, they had to get slashed. And now we've been able to make some improvements to it, to make the life of the animal control officers and anybody working over there easier to deal with on a day-to-day basis, make it more, um, warming to people to come and adopt an animal from us, and just in overall appearance that we really care about animals, and we've done a lot of things. So we put in new turf, which took away our Harvo constraints that we had on the area, and we put in a new pad so that they, the animal control officers can drive their truck all the way into the facility and then pull the gate shut, and then deal with the animal that they have on board. So with that, Mike, I will turn it to you.
Mike Schmidt, six thousand eight Northwest Fifty-Eighth Terrace.
Nice to meet you.
Um, so about, probably about almost two years ago, the city council approved, uh, for when I was the vice mayor at the time, to form a committee for the animal control center. Uh, Judy's on it. Debbie's on it. Judy's on it, Debbie's on it, Deputy's on it, the chief of police is on it. We also have Mark Eble, who's Humane Society CEO. He's been on it to help us with things. And your...
Daughter-in-law.
Daughter-in-law is on the, she works at Neil Vet, so we got different input for different things we wanted. So the first thing was, the committee was just to, to point out what we saw the needs were of the Animal Control Center, and then to present them to the council to see if we could mostly change the physical appearance of both the outside and the inside of the Animal Control Center. If you were on the council a long time ago, so it's mostly just Roger and myself, it was, we fought about this for years and years and years about building an Animal Control Center. We can never get one done. And then when we got one done, we had to go with the cheapest bid. So we got what we paid for, and there were a lot of things that we had to fix. So it puts some slides together. This was the main issue, like Judy had stated, that we had an issue with parvo due to the fact that when the outdoor cages, when they hosed them out, the feces and whatever else was left just went into the grass. So it went into the ground, which created parvo, which stays in the ground for seven years. So we already knew we had to deal with that issue, and so we wanted to make a drainage area. So this area is behind it. If you haven't been to the Animal Control Center, I would suggest you go to see it, especially now that the outside's done because we like to do what's on the outside to the inside. So here is what happens. I tried to take the same kind of picture, so here's what it looks like now. So thank you to the Public Works Department with Mike Turman. They worked on a drainage area, so that way, once they pick up, you know, the droppings and everything, then they hose the rest into that drain that will then go into the sewer and go in. There's a sewer line on the side of the building, so it all drains. We then put the artificial turf that the city council approved to put, it's called a doggy turf. It's not really astral turf. It's not any kind. It's actually made for animals. So it's along where the fence line is, so dogs don't dig it up. They've got, it's tacked down with metal trim along the side. I think, didn't they say that they'll come out and fix it if we ever have any tears or rips or anything in it? And I think it's like a lifetime thing. So I'm not too concerned about it. They have it at different places. There's a 405 Vet, a Memorial, and Rockwell, and theirs looks brand new still to this day. So, and theirs was about three years old. Okay, this was the side corner, and you see that, that's the doggy cage there. So when they're in the summer, this was last summer, that's where they'd go to stay out of the sun. So we decided, this was one of the suggestions of Mark Eble, was that since that turf will kind of get hot in the summer, you probably want to shade it or put, you know, sprinklers down. We decided we'd go with the shade. So we used, I think it's Double A Playgrounds, who we used for all the playgrounds in War Acres a couple of years ago, and we redid all the playgrounds. They estimated to give us a shade and some benches, and so this is what it looks like now. That way, if, you know, part of the thing that, we talked about it at our last meeting, when the park lady was out here, can't remember what her name was.
Oh, Connie?
Okay, she had mentioned something that stuck with me, that this Animal Control Center is a kill center. Because, and we even talked about it, it used to be War Acres would hold the pets for a couple of days. The owner didn't come, we'd get rid of it. We're trying to make it where this is like an animal control and adoption center. And we have been adopting more than we've been putting down. And so I would like to change that stigma that War Acres is just like, take your animals there to get rid of them. That we actually are like an adoption center. So with that in mind, we thought not just put a shade down for the pets, but if somebody was wanting to look at a dog, you can take them outside. You could sit in the shade if it's hot out, and you could sit down and interact with the pets and see if that's an animal you'd like to adopt. You can start to see part of the concrete. This is what it looked like before. So the gate is concreted up to the back gate, but then it was kind of like a hindsight. They thought, well, if we have to get a truck in because we have a wild animal or we have a delivery, so they just dumped gravel down. So in the summer, they have to cut it with a weed eater to cut through gravel. So it was really a pain. It looked very, you know, if it was raining and flooding like the rain we just had, they probably weren't gonna drive the truck back there. So we wanted it to connect to the door because the door, this is what it looks like now. Mike did a great job, him and his team, of concreting it up to make it look like it flowed to where the side door is, that it's gonna be on the next slide. This is what we had. It was just this one little pad, and then the gravel was probably about 10 feet farther over. So it really didn't help to have the gravel with that concrete slab. We were gonna leave sections of grass, but then we thought we didn't want any maintenance outside to have to be done. So this is what it looks like now.
Plus it lowers the parvo.
Right. And so what also happened when they were doing this, they discovered that because we took the cheapest bid, we just built the building and put grass down or did whatever. Water was getting, from the rain, was getting under the building. So they also pitched it, right? They, they slated it off so the rain will drain away from the building, so we're not gonna have future costs of cracked concrete of the foundation. So this was the first dog that was allowed on. His name is Boomer.
Aww.
So...
Terrible name.
They would just like to thank everyone for doing this. I think it tells, talks a lot about a city, about how you treat your animals, shows like, you know, your city. I know the, the committee's still meeting because now we're trying to come up with a list of things we'd like to change on the inside. If you've ever been up there, it kind of looks like a prison, sounds like a prison. It's just concrete walls and a concrete floor. We'd like to kind of change some of that. And for the cats, they're in a storage room with just six crates. We need to do something different for that. I didn't really have anything else. Do you have anything you want to comment on it?
Nope, you covered it.
Yeah, so I just want to say thank you. We just wanted to give you an update. So thank you very much.
I was gonna say how easy the, the grass supposedly is to cling, it's the way it's made. I thought that was impressive, being a non-cat person.
Are those dogs running on the same grass that's on the University of Nebraska field?
I was thinking it's Nebraska. But thank you very much. Yeah, we want to thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it.
Good job, Mike.
Myers, thank you. And Morris. All right, item number eight, discussion of possible action on changing garbage services to Big Blue service. And that's me. That's a question that we've had for quite a while, even the, I didn't even think Willie probably dealt with it too. So the reason why I wanted to bring this up is because, one, we, inside the budget committee that we had, we decided to actually allocate funds for this. And one of the big reasons why I wanted to do that is because we have more phone calls complaining about trash than anything else that exists in this city. So we can't hire full-time guys. Everybody's a temp. They don't really have a dog in the fight. So it's really a problem for how many wasted moments, hours, that is wasted here at the city, as well as at Public Works, and having to go back and redo things. So the way this would work is that we would change from having bi-weekly to having once a week with the big trash. So that's the reason why I brought this before you guys, because I have heard from citizens a lot. The staff has heard from citizens countless times, and it's really a waste of city resources to continue in the way that we're doing it.
And what's the lead time if we decide to order a truck?
Mike?
The current lead time, I talked to the supplier today, or the vendor, which is United Engines. The Hile unit is sold through them. It's about a year, maybe as early as next June, but they're still on the fence for three months on, there is a production like for transmissions. The Allison transmissions are completely sold out for the next two years. And so the Mac uses a Volvo engine, so they're, so the definitive answer will be like in three months, but it's possible it could be here next June.
But basically a year minimum.
Is it on a state contract? Is it on a state contract? And can we...
Yes.
Lease purchase like we would, anything else? In the past, we would purchase garbage trucks because they were $200,000. We would have $200,000. But as the trucks are getting more and more expensive, I think everybody needs to look at doing lease purchases instead of just outright purchasing these vehicles. Because you take one $450,000 out of there and you're limiting what you have for anything else. So we need to see if that's an option and if it's on a state contract. Because I asked Mike if he had the specs for the truck, and he said, well, not yet. So we need to find those things out because I'd really like to see us do a lease purchase instead of a just big lump.
And a good dump.
Like we did the, what was it, 360, but the one we got before that was like 270 or right around 300.
Went from 15%. The truck we bought in '22 was 307, and it went up to 355 in one year. So it was a 15% increase.
You have it budgeted for 450.
Right, but still doing it with, if we're able to lease purchase, I mean, it's always, it's a better option, I think.
That number was just thrown in there at budget time so that they could be a placeholder.
Oh, okay.
Evans?
Could we retrofit our new truck, the rear loader, as a backup if this one went down so that we wouldn't be stuck with no trash service?
Absolutely. We would use the two newest trucks and put tippers on the back, two tippers on each one.
Like Bethany's using?
Kind of like, it'd be about $30,000 to retrofit those trucks.
How many full-time people would we lose, or will we lose any full-time people by doing that?
They're all temporary people, right?
Well, we have, currently we have three drivers for residential. We have two full-time carriers, and we use four temporary laborers as carriers. So on Mondays, we typically try to run three trucks because it's heavier. The Thursday, Friday, we run two trucks. So we use the driver, sometimes we use the EPA driver. We have one driver. It's been out on workers' comp for a long time. So we would try to transfer two of the carriers to street department, and it's possible the workers' comp driver may not come back. So...
They'd still be employed by the city?
Yeah. So, so we'd probably utilize those drivers in other departments. I mean, have a person that could retire in the next couple of years, a supervisor that could retire. So it might just kind of work out through the attrition. And we have, we have some openings in the street department and parks where, I think we're two down, Pam, three. I think we're down three people that we could utilize to...
That's what I was gonna say. The two guys you have as carriers could go over to the street department, and you'd be back to staff.
Right. But they could also be utilized if the side loader, if it does go down. But this piece of equipment, there's a couple of different brands. So the Hile is, is a reliable brand. It's expensive. All the equipment is expensive. But obviously, you have to maintain it and be responsible. I mean, you, if you're, you need a good driver to drive it and arm so things could get tore up real easy. You know, cars parking on the street would be, be a hurdle. You know, if, training people not to park in front of the, the Big Blues if that's the way you decide to go. So there'll be a transition period, obviously. So...
How many feet do they need from the Big Blue truck?
This can reach out pretty good distance, maybe six feet, six feet or so. So obviously, you want a responsible operator not to try to thread the eye of the needle, so to speak. In other words, the bumper's here and he's a foot off of it, and something happens and he bumps the car.
So will each truck have one person or two people on it?
The truck would have one person, and the side loader has an arm which comes out and grabs and dumps it. So...
So I've seen it, if there's a problem getting it, that driver has to get out and...
Correct. So if you had people that were in the handicap or disabled that had the, filled out the paperwork, they would actually walk up to the house, bring it out to the curb, empty it, and then roll the, the cart back to the, to the house. So...
Interesting. That's good.
Do you anticipate many citizens needing that feature?
You know, I'm not exactly sure how many it would be. It could, I would just be guessing, maybe 5%. I mean, it could be higher.
And just to clarify, the dumpsters, since it'd be one time a week instead of two, I know citizens in the past have been concerned about that, but the dumpsters are gonna be bigger, correct?
Yeah. Typically, we allow four 40-gallon cans, which the, the Blues are typically somewhere around 96 gallons.
Okay.
And you would have the option of getting a second Blue, and we could even set up a third one if you, for an additional fee. So kind of the figures from talking to Bethany, about, we would order 5,000 dump, 5,000 dumpsters. There's about 3,200 residents. So there would be roughly a quarter to a half would have two dumpsters, and the rest would have one.
Do the residents pay for the dumpsters?
No, the city would purchase the dumpsters. It's gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood for 5,500 would be about $300,000, $500, something like that, three. It'll be pretty expensive, but they would actually brand them with the War Acres logo. They'd brand them with numbers and stuff. So...
So if somebody wants a second one, does the city still cover that?
No, don't need to pay for it.
You need to pay for it, want a second one?
Well, it'd be part of the fee.
I think initially, we would probably supply because of...
The first.
The first, and maybe the second one, but the third one for sure.
And then now we have to put our tree cuttings in the, we can't lay them on the side.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So will our garbage fee be based on the number of dumps, or the number of carts that we have? If we had two carts, will our bill be significantly more?
You know, I'm, you know, I'm in Oklahoma City, so we, whether we don't put the cart out or we put three out, if, we have two carts, so we put out two, so it's the same price. So the third cart, you'd probably be charged extra for.
So councilman, this isn't meant, this isn't meant to be glit, but you actually set the rates. So right now, the rates are set based upon the existing costs of, of the service. Obviously, if you change fundamentally the nature of the service, there'd be, I mean, you could leave the rates as is. You, you could increase them, you could decrease them. But effectively, your question is one posed to you and to your fellow council members, what would you guys charge? Because Mike doesn't get to make that decision. It's actually you guys...
Right.
Who make that decision.
But, but currently, right now, they're, they're allowed four 40-gallon cans and eight additional 33-gallon bags in unlimited limbs in three-foot lengths under 50 pounds. So there's some people with large lawns, they could, they could easily have the eight bags, and that's twice a week. So that the guys actually load by hand into the trucks.
So...
You know, I have a, I have a big yard, I have two big yards, and I have a lot of waste primarily in the, in the fall whenever the leaves come down. So I'm putting out a lot of trash twice a week.
You know, there, there's ways to pulverize, pulverize leaves.
Why you say wood chipper?
Well, I mean, I don't know about a wood chipper, but you can use a lawnmower and you could probably get a four-to-one reduction.
Yeah, I mulch my leaves in the winter and the fall with my mower, but it creates a lot of waste.
Right. And we still have the option that you could rent a four-yard dumpster for, is it $32.50? So four cubic yards dumpster could be placed. You have a large amount of bulky waste. As you know, fees increase every year. The landfill fees go up automatically every year. They're in the 310,000 range. This last year, they'll probably go up another two to 3%. The truck costs last year was 15%, so they could go up.
We'll adjust accordingly, for sure. Tribby, did you have a question first?
Well, I mean, I just, I just hope that the council understands that, I mean, essentially the money for the side loader is essentially the same money as we were relying on for the police department vehicles. That's, it, it's a trade-off, one for the other here.
For now.
So, for now. So let's, let's keep that in mind as we proceed in this discussion.
How much money would be, if we don't hire the temporaries, we would, we would no longer need them. Do you have any idea how much money that saves us?
Just some rough numbers here. I've actually have costs for residential, commercial broken out. The number I came up with when I substitute the numbers in for the side loader, somewhere around $200,000 a year or less.
May I, may I have just a moment to speak?
Sure.
I would like to give a perspective of safety and health and first responder. I can't tell you in my 24 years how many times I've stopped and picked up a trash can. I also can't tell you how many times we've had to dodge trash cans blowing across the road. And without seeming crude, when I've picked up trash cans before and they dump trash, it's not always just a tuna can. It's tampons, it's insulin syringes, and things that we don't want blowing across the road. Big Blues rarely tip over. So I just wanted to give my opinion. I hesitated doing that when Dr. Shapiro, who was wise and forward-thinking many years ago, spoke up because I wasn't the chief, but under the premise that we're not losing full-time employees, I wanted to at least speak up and give my opinion.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I have another question. Are we still gonna do the big trash once every three months?
Well, it's actually every, every quarter.
Every quarter, yeah.
What, every quarter?
My suggestion would go, would be to go to twice a year, maybe the, a spring and a fall cleanup. And then, then you could just call in and we would come and maybe change the, the ordinance, which requires a $35 trip fee for, to pick up the load. Maybe we could just waive that and charge the $17 per cubic yard. Maybe we could just waive that and charge the, uh, seventeen dollars per cubic yard. The grappling truck is forty cubic yards, uh, it's approximately about three hundred and twenty dollars to, uh, empty at the landfill. And this is uncompressed, like the, uh, rear loaders and the front loaders all compress the trash. So you're getting about a four-to-one compaction, so, so it's actually more expensive to dispose of vegetative debris and mattresses and furniture and stuff that's not easily compacted.
So we could essentially put some large trash in the dump, in the blue dumpsters, right? Some of the large, you know, like if a chair fit in there?
Well, I mean, you, you, you would define it in your ordinance like the lid would have to be closed, like, uh, if you.
Yeah.
If you drive around and, I live in Oklahoma City, so you drive around and you see, uh, people have a bunch of stuff sticking out real high. It may not be able to dump that, so, uh, I know Bethany adopted their ordinance, I looked at their ordinance, uh, to have the lid closed because it could be, first of all, it could blow out of the dumpster like Chief Coy was talking about, um. And citizens, Edmund has an ordinance where they, uh, require the bagging, so you're supposed to bag your trash, you're not really supposed to throw loose trash, a lot of people do.
People.
So.
My wife gives on me for not bagging trash. All right, Myers?
So I'm all for big blues, however, I think we need a more in-depth study, more information, broken down. Has to, how much this will, I just need more information and I need to see it on paper. How much money are we gonna save, how much money are we gonna spend? How does that change the, um, pickup for the peop- for the residents? I just, I just, this is great talking about it, I need to see a well-thought-out plan on putting this together and how much money we'll spend and what changes are gonna take place, how much we're gonna save. Hopefully I made myself clear.
Well, most of those things are already answered, but that's okay. What's, what's Prince?
We get some sort of ballot out with our newsletter asking the residents what they prefer, is that?
We're not gonna do that.
Pardon me?
We're not gonna do that.
That has ended in disaster more times.
We will not do that again.
Well, you know, I, I know people.
That's our decision here.
I know a lot of people in my neighborhood would be against it. I mean, even though it makes a lot of sense and there's the money savings involved, the, the people really like trash service the way it is.
But I think people also resist change.
Right.
Like water bills and sewer bills. In grocery stores.
I feel like I'm really torn because I do personally love our trash service here, I'm probably on the side with your neighbors. But at the same time, our employ- like our temp, temps, we have to, you know, employ better. Um, I do like the big blues, I think that they're also like bigger capacity, more durable, all these greater things. But I need a plan as well, I need something that shows, like, it sounds like we're gonna be picking up trash less from big trash pickup to regular weekly pickups, just because we have a bigger trash can, we're adding more equipment. I need a better plan wrote out too, but this was a good discussion.
And a lot of this has to do with more efficiency, staffing, getting rid of a lot of the problems, but this is meant for discussion for this time around because it's a big decision that we have to make, just like, I mean, how many, how long do we talk about sewer rates?
I see a major disadvantage with people who have, like you do, usually every fall I'll have anywhere from forty to sixty trash bags full of leaves. I am not going to go in my backyard and mulch that. So what would be the proposal for picking that stuff up? I also have a garden and at the end of the season I'll have two to three huge bags full of, you know, tomato stems and all that other good stuff.
Those are big trash in the spring and the fall, so that's the reason why we'd still have big trash pickup for those times.
Well, that's wonderful, so I have to store all that stuff in my backyard till we have big trash pickup?
Uh, probably, but we'll come up with a plan.
I would like you to come up with a better plan than what I'm hearing right now.
Bags fit in the, the trash cans, it's a ninety-six gallon.
You, you could fill up your cans and then, then call on an extra pickup for, obviously an extra charge, I mean, it could be loaded, uh.
Why should I have to pay an extra charge?
Because it costs extra.
Well, you, so you're not really serving, serving the people of, of the city, you're just looking out to.
The city's finances, yes, yes, that's what we do here.
But I'm gonna be paying for it on my sewer and water bill.
Thank you, Jan. All right, thank you guys.
I think one of the, one of the hurdles that I've been trying to overcome since I've been down there is the temporary labor on the carriers. Uh, we do get applicants that are quality, that wanna do the job, they like the insurance, they like the retirement and the holidays, but they can't live on thirteen dollars, under fifteen dollars an hour. So. I personally believe that if they're serving the citizens of War Acres and providing a vital service, they should have benefits and vacation and that should be reflected in the pay rate. That's the only way we're gonna solve the problem. When we go to the temp service, they have no skin in the game, that's part of the reason we get a lot of phone calls. We put them on the do-not-return list, you get new guys, you don't know where they come from. Uh, so it's definitely a very, it makes it very challenging. But overall, they do pretty much a great job, I mean, we have thirty-two hundred, thirty-three hundred homes. If they miss five homes, it's still a pretty good high percentage that they're picking up and so overall, they really pick up a very, very high percentage of the trash, if it's out by the curve in time.
Right, good deal, all right, well, on these two items, we're gonna take no action on either, uh, eight or nine, so we can go ahead and move on.
Can I just throw one real quick?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Have we thought about doing recycling bins for like glass and tin and all that, just, is that just throwing that out there?
I think we had, uh, under Mayor Woolley, we had Republic, uh, company come in and, uh, the lady came and, uh, presented her proposal and from what I recall, it's been four, five, six years. The cost per cubic yard was somewhere around, uh, it seems like it would be like fifty dollars. And she stood right there and said, if we can't economically, uh, send it to a recycler like glass, we will just haul it to the landfill.
So there is an option, there's a company that we use for the recycle, the volunteer recycling, who comes and picks ours up on behalf of Replenish, their name is Fertile Grounds.
Fertile Grounds?
And they are very interested and they keep asking me if War, if War Acres is ready to do recycling and they would love to come talk to us about it.
We, we had a talk at, when you delivered the bags and, so that was just, what, a week or two ago? So we had a talk about that and, uh, War Acres is small, so like Oklahoma City, you have a scale of economy. So you're gonna app, you're gonna pay more if you go, Republic was gonna, I forgot exactly what they're gonna charge, but it turned out to be something like fifty dollars a cubic yard. So there, there is a cost associated with the recycling and picking up curbside, I don't know if we have the scale of economy, but the fertile grounds, the ideal was if we could separate the items and maybe pack it in a dedicated truck and deliver it to its location, there might be some scale of economy. Uh, I don't know if we'd have to pay a tipping fee, so we just kind of talked for about an hour and just kind of got the ball rolling, so.
Same, same conversation I had with them, it sounds like, but I think that again would be part of putting the plan together to, as, A with or with, B with or without recycling type of a thing.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on, so we're gonna move up item number fourteen, so we can get the planners and engineers out of here. Discussion on possible action on the resolution permitting to the TAP grant twenty twenty-four, proposed sidewalks. Wallace?
Did you say fourteen?
Yeah, this is, it's been brought up.
It's amended, amended agenda.
There is another agenda sent out early, early, early Thursday morning.
Go ahead, Wallace.
A- as we discussed in, uh, both the engineer's report and planner's report, uh, there's an opportunity to, uh, extend the MacArthur sidewalk to make connection to the new Oklahoma City pedestrian bridge along Northwest Expressway. Uh, as we mentioned earlier, we have received grant money to build the sidewalk from Sixty-Fifth around to the driveway that goes into the scooters. And so what this application as far as a ticket from that driveway, uh, along the south side of Northwest Expressway, uh, to the pedestrian bridge. If you're familiar with that area, there's two things that I know you recognize, is that there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that go, that's walk in front of, uh, that parapet wall and the traffic. And if you look at Northwest Expressway, obviously that's very dangerous, especially wearing dark clothes in the morning, which when I go to work, I see it multiple times. Uh, the second thing that I'm sure that you've recognized is that there's about a forty-foot gap, uh, behind the wall where there's a drainage structure that will have to be extended. Uh, this project is a joint project. Oklahoma City currently has the authority, maintenance authority of Northwest Expressway through War Acres through a mutual cooperative agreement, uh, and they have the authority to be able to expend dollars on the extension of that box into the lake and they're willing to do that, uh, as a partnership with War Acres. We're making the application for the sidewalk, uh, inside of Oklahoma City. The dollar figure that you see here does include that box extension, but we will be reimbursed by the City of Oklahoma City for that, that amount. And so that's what the resolution is, is for us to make application through the Department of Transportation, uh, Transportation Alternative Program grant this season, uh, in order to accomplish that connection from the War Acres sidewalk to the safety of the Oklahoma City pedestrian bridge across Northwest Expressway.
Good deal, well, and I'll tell you that, so Wallace and I had this conversation because, uh, I came across Bradley Carter, Ward One of Oklahoma City, and he has been a tremendous partner for us and I met him, I said, hey, we wanna do this extension over to your bridge and he said, get it done, so made it really easy to have those relationships and Wallace, thank you for following up and doing that. Thank you.
I do, I do.
All right, any questions?
Yes, so it's gonna, the sidewalk's gonna come down the west side of MacArthur?
Yes, ma'am.
And then take the turn in front of Seven-Eleven?
Yes, ma'am.
And go in front of scooters?
Yes, ma'am.
And what happens when you hit the lake?
That's what the extension is from Oklahoma.
That's where they're gonna widen that?
Yeah, there, there currently is a parapet, which is a barrier wall between traffic and the lake. There's an eight-foot green belt there prior to getting to the fence, sidewalks are five foot wide. So there's currently a green belt in there that can be improved to a sidewalk, except for that forty-foot gap where the box is. And with Oklahoma City extending a, and a box covert is a drainage structure that goes underneath the highway coming out of the lake. And so that structure will need to be extended, so the sidewalk will then go over the top of that to make connection, uh, to Oklahoma City limit and, uh, eventually the pedestrian bridge.
So that will be made much safer than it is right now?
Oh, oh, yeah.
They can actually get.
Yeah, and so all the pedestrian traffic could actually stay behind that barrier wall in order to, to get to, you know, War Acres to Seven-Eleven to, you know, scooters, the dentist's office, wherever they travel. And there is considerable amount of traffic, I'm sure you may have even responded to, uh, you know, some pedestrians that may have been hit. I mean, there, there's quite a few people, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic in there. We call them, uh, pedestrian paths, you can see in the grass where it's worn down, uh, by traffic there by Seven-Eleven in front of the dentist's office.
So it'll eventually hook up to the bridge on the.
South side. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. It says that, uh, the City of War Acres acknowledges availability to require the local match of no less than twenty percent. What, what, will, will our percent be if it's no less than twenty percent?
It, right now, it's an eighty-twenty, uh, so it will be twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Yep.
That's just the required language that ODOT puts in their order.
So out of the eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars, we would be responsible for twenty percent of that?
That is correct.
Quality of life.
What would that figure be?
Hundred, a little over a hundred and twenty thousand, eighty-six, eight hundred and sixty thousand, twenty percent of that is actually a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
The hundred and forty-two thousand we have in the budget was for just miscellaneous sidewalks, was it not?
Yes.
We knew we were gonna be asking for funds for different sidewalks, so we do have the money.
Now, now Pam, that, that actually is in there for the current sidewalk project, for the match for the current sidewalk project. Because we're just now interviewing for the design of the MacArthur project from Sixty-Fifth Street to the Seven-Eleven or to the scooters. And so the money that we have current, this current budget, the hundred and twenty-five, is that, is the twenty percent local match that we owe for that project.
So we do not have this budget?
Not, not currently, okay, so, but, but this project is a twenty-twenty-five application and so by the time that you do, yes, by the time that you do the design, select the engineer, go out to bid, you would be looking at probably twenty-twenty-six dollars. So it gives you time to, to budget that, because as you know, the, the state won't ask for that.
Can ask, so why don't they find?
Yeah, so, so the money that's in there currently is to handle the project that, that is currently, we've already received the award for that from ACOG and it's the sidewalk on the west side of MacArthur.
Thank you for the clarification. Take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Evans?
Yes.
Prince? Steele? Yay. Douglas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
One Thayer?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Meyer?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, thank you all, item number ten, discussion of possible action on restriping Six, MacArthur intersection. Public safety and prevention, and this is on a state contract, so we got the best deal possible. And it's really a safety issue, I've had calls numerously, I'm sure Ward One has had it. Deputy Chief Allen called me and said, hey, there's also this other area too, so we need to do it all throughout the city. Um, but I also emailed everybody, um, what these are and what, um, I don't know if you guys got your email, but I sent you the pictures that, uh, we had done by our drone. So any questions or discussion?
Are we contemplating resurfacing MacArthur on either side of this intersection anytime soon?
In the future, the goal and objective is to make it look like Forty-Ninth, Fifty, Thirty-Sixth, all that, so going forward, we will, but that's probably five or six years down the road, probably.
Right, the, the intersection is actually concrete and it extends out a couple hundred feet and then obviously the west Sixty-third is probably needing some overlay.
And, and if I can speak in Mike's right, the east of the intersection, the concrete intersection was constructed in two thousand six, two thousand eight, uh, as part of the widening project from Sixty-third to just north of Fifty Street. Concrete's in good condition, we made application this past year for a safety project, uh, to, which it would include any type of closing access, if you, if you drive that intersection, you notice there's three driveways that are almost right at the end of the radius and so those access points are hazardous, upgrades to the ADA, uh, buttons, even though there is ADA compliance, there, the ramps are out of compliant, the buttons are old, they need to be updated. We do plan on making application for, uh, a hundred percent, there, in ACOG's funding, they set aside two million or more for safety projects. And so we do plan on this year, instead of putting it in as a, uh, intersection project like we did last year, is try to make application for safety dollars to get a hundred percent of that. Uh, again, that's three, four years down the road by the time you look at planning, uh, award and things like that. But the, the pavement east of that intersection is in poor condition. Yeah, both, and so I think looking at a mill and overlay based off of our finances and budget, looking at applications. We've been really successful because of, uh, who was it that said, how many block license plates did you read? There's a lot of traffic that goes through War Acres and east-west, north-south, you know, east-west, they're along Sixty-third Street, even though it dead ends at Rockwell, but especially north-south, I mean, we usually have good applications for those type of funding opportunities for mill and overlays, but we do need to start looking at how we're gonna get those resurfaced. Uh, this striping, talking with, uh, the, the contractor, will provide those four, five, uh, six years. It's a multi-polymer material, which is the most up-to-date, that's what the Department of Transportation uses. And so instead of, of paint, that's a temporary type construction striping, this will last for the duration of when we might be able to make application and get funds for that intersection improvement.
When you said ACOG has two million for safety projects, is that for all of ACOG or just?
It, it, it is and. It, it is, and this year, actually, the, the funding is increased because ODOT, the Department of Transportation, has state funds that can be added to what's available, so there may be more than that. But it is dedicated specifically for safety projects. And again, the difference is it's 100% funded, where your STBG, UZA, which is a fancy name for, you know, transportation projects, block grants, safety transportation block grants, you know, those would be 80/20 funding, like the sidewalk tap funds, but safety is 100%.
Right.
All right, entertaining motion, there's no other discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
Second. Prince?
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Prince?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yay.
Steele?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
And I'm gonna stop you real quick. Are you making the motion to approve the supplemental appropriation for $32,000 and to do the striping? Is that your motion?
Yes.
Evans?
Pam? Real quick, and maybe I was the one that was in area, but I sent you this item. The quote that we have on the state contract, like the mayor mentioned, we're able to utilize state contracts, and so if we act within the next four weeks, six weeks, we can use existing state contract, which has a better price, and it's actually at about $24,350. I would say.
You're welcome.
I like how he thinks.
And then?
I would, I would say what you feel like you need to on that, if you want to do a little bit excess, because they came out and measured this, so these are their quantities and their proposal. And, but anyway, you can approve for 32, but the invoice is gonna be closer to around 25,000.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Lunch money after that.
Do you wanna leave it at 32, or you wanna change it?
Let's, let's leave it at 32. Sorry.
Evans?
Yes.
31.
Meyer?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right.
The mayor kicked me out, I think, so I'm leaving.
All right. Thank you. All right, real quick, we're gonna go to item number 15, because I know we're gonna be here for a while with the other discussion. Item number 15, discussion of possible action on ordinance amending 6.0815 related to unlawful abandonment of animals along the streets and other places. Deputy Chief.
So this has come up with, started really at the animal shelter, people literally walking up dumping puppies, dogs. We see them on camera. We try to get an officer or animal control over there quick enough, they're gone. We've even gone as far as using a flock, trying to find the people. Once we do, the DA's office isn't real interested in filing any charges on them. Just so you guys know, because this could be bringing more things to y'all in the future, Matt can tell you, the DA's office is taking more and more things where they just want to kick it back to municipal court. They don't want anything to do with it, and it's happening to almost every misdemeanor. And I mean, we're talking, you know, whether it's larceny of anything below $1,000, or, or dogs being dumped, to, you know, possession of stolen property even, is something that they're trying to start kicking back to municipal court. Don't know how that's gonna work yet, but, so I talked to Matt about this one, and this would allow us to actually be able to write a citation, put them in front of our judges in our court, and make them answer for what they're doing when the DA's office doesn't want anything to do with it.
And to be clear on those, it was in the memo, but we're not creating a new crime, we're creating a new municipal crime that's already a state law crime.
Right.
Our courts, with the exception of a few crimes like DUI, we have jurisdiction over misdemeanors. But for it to be a crime here, it has to be in our ordinances. And so what they're have, essentially the reason this is being brought is it's already illegal under state law, but if the prosecutors for the state, the district attorney's office won't pursue it, they refer it back for municipal, we can't file it municipal if it's not a violation of our municipal code. So all we're, all Jason asked me to do was take a state statute and put it in the city code. So same crime, just a local crime.
So does that mean you're making it where to go back to them? I'm trying to understand why we're changing that.
I mean, we can still send it to district court, but if they, but if they refer it back, which, I mean, I can tell you from the village, where I'm prosecutor, I'm seeing that a lot more since Behenna took over. And to be fair to her, some would say because of what some people thought was gonna happen with the election, there was an exodus from the DA's office before Mr. Prater left office. And so I don't know how their staffing levels are, but I know for the last year, they've been running very thin on staffing. And so a lot of these misdemeanors, they just, it's not that they didn't want them, it's just they didn't have the staffing to be able to do it. They had to focus on the felonies. So this would at least allow for a recourse, because as of today, you commit the crime, if the DA's office won't take it, then you go scot-free.
So can it be considered a, I mean, I know animal cruelty is a felony. Can it be considered a?
That would be going way too far.
Yeah, animal cruelty, you have to meet certain elements.
Okay.
Like any crime.
Like injuries to the dog or whatever.
Correct. And those elements, you know, have to be provable and all that.
Okay.
Dumping a dog, and Matt and I've had this exact discussion, even in zero-degree weather, doesn't per se equal animal cruelty.
Okay.
So that's why we were looking for a way to be able to have a recourse through our city, if, you know, someone does this, to be able to, you know, side them and let them come to court here.
Okay.
Is it decidable, affinable, incarceratable?
It'd be affinable through us.
Affinable. Misdemeanor.
And I will say, we, we have a ton of overlap at our ordinance between what we criminalize and what's criminalized under state statute. The PD already does an excellent job of using their discretion to decide whether or not to send somebody to municipal court for a misdemeanor, or whether or not to send them to district court. And so this would be no different. It would give them another tool in their toolbox to be able to, they could still send charges to the DA's office.
Correct.
And if they get kicked back, we would at least have a recourse here. They would also have the ability to file it locally instead of filing it in district court.
Well, there should be some discretion on, did somebody try to drop the animal off and there was nobody there to give the dog? Because nobody should be given a misdemeanor for dropping a dog off that they can't take care of.
True.
That is an absolute period. So this discussion needs to have that in mind, that we're dealing with people's lives over animals. It's more important for that. So this is something that we need to have, probably as a tool in a toolbox, but we are dealing with people's lives and their future over an animal. That's the only thing I have to say about this conversation.
So this is basically aiding the police department to do their job cleanly without any?
Right, and this doesn't take away, what the mayor's saying is, do you need to leave in discretion?
Mm-hmm.
Right? This isn't making it absolute. It's no different than I don't absolutely have to write you a speeding ticket.
Right.
Okay? It's the exact same thing, all right? The officer's discretion, the reason, you know, hey, we tried to call three times, no one answered, whatever the case may be, we've come by here, we, those things will be taken at officer discretion. This doesn't take away any of that. It just gives a tool in our toolbox for the person who purposely is doing something, you know, egregious to a, to a dog, a cat, or any, any other domestic animal. We have an ability to do something about it if we need to.
So could this ordinance be used against a, a person whose animal gets out frequently? Would that be considered an abandon?
We have other ordinances for that.
We, we, that would be a dog running out large.
You would have to catch them dropping off.
Correct.
They're, they're gonna have to have probable cause, and then the prosecutor's gonna have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt, not only that they deposited the animal, but with the intent of abandoning the animal.
Okay. Would this also pertain to people abandoning their animal? Like if they're renting a house and they move out and just leave the animal there?
Technically, no, because it's, it's any person who deposits, so you're taking your dog, you're, you're putting it somewhere.
Somewhere, yeah, okay.
As opposed to walking away. So my personal opinion, I'm not the prosecutor here, but if it was that situation, they just moved all their stuff and left the dog in the backyard, we might have some other things we could file on them, but it wouldn't be this. And I don't think that's the intent on, on this.
Okay.
However, if they put it in their car and then open up the door, and when they get out to the expressway and shoo it out, that's different.
You said you don't have to absolutely give me a speeding ticket?
That is correct.
Let's keep it fair, keep it fair.
How fast were you going?
See how he picked up.
Pam?
No, for, for you, for sure, they're gonna issue the ticket.
Me and my Lamborghini.
That's what I want.
All right, take a motion on the items, whatever it is.
15, A and B. I move, we approve.
Yeah.
A and B.
You have to do it separate.
We do.
Yeah.
In that case, I move, we approve item A, just to be in order.
Second to item A.
Morris?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Steele?
Abstained.
Douglas?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Meyer?
No.
Motion approved.
All right, we're gonna take a quick recess. Oh, all right, emergency clause, item B. Need a motion, a second.
I move, we approve item B, 15B, the emergency clause.
Morris?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Steele?
Abstained.
Myers?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, now we're gonna take a break, so we can take a picture with these gentlemen with the Purple Heart, black. Is that all right? All right, we're gonna take a break for a minute, and take a bathroom break if you need. So anybody wants to come down, let's do a picture real quick.
Oh. My Purple Heart.
Glad you did.
Thanks for giving it.
That's enough.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and re-adjourn for going to item number 12, discussion of possible action on authorizing the chief to purchase and have install the irrigation system at the police department for 10,000, well, 9,000, 960. We have budgeted 10,000.
Correct. And this is basically just to finish the outdoor sprinkler system. It was supposed to be put in with the building and wasn't. Obviously, you guys know all the area we have. We've already hired a company this year to come in and start spraying for weed control and fertilizing to start making the yard look nicer. That's why this was budgeted. This will also include sprinklers for the, they're currently empty for the flower beds up front, but once they get sprinklers in it, we'll, we've even had some, some people say that they will donate time and some of the officers and stuff, and maybe even money if we, you know, to actually beautify that, too. We're just waiting to get the sprinklers.
Good deal.
I had a question on that. I noticed on the bid that the bore across the street, is it across the, is?
It's across that driveway.
Across the driveway?
Correct.
Okay.
And the one spot they're not boring is, because it just wasn't worth it, is the little, golly, I think it's four foot or something, that backs up to the, to the, the veterinarian side.
Okay.
Because we would have to bore it or that driveway, too, be another $1,000 or something to do that little four-foot section.
And I don't have any problem with the bore, except the fact that they said if they hit utilities, they're not liable.
Right.
They want somebody else to take the liability. I'm not comfortable with that. I'm a little more comfortable with a driveway than a street.
Right.
Because we should know exactly.
And they should be able to mark what's on each side of that driveway, the companies should.
Brand new, yeah.
Or if they can get back out of the right-of-way and do their bore, then we shouldn't have any utilities there.
Right.
Either way, but that was my only concern. I have no problem with putting irrigation in, I think it's needed. Should've been done with the building.
You're right.
Yes.
Is this the same landscape company that's been walking around looking at the flower beds and everything?
There's been a There's been a couple of different ones working on bids for different landscaping. This is totally for irrigation for the fire, for the police department.
Those guys are still working on the bids?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have more than one bid for this project?
There was a bid last year that Chief Anderson got. Basically, this, it may have been over a year ago at this point because it was budgeted for last year. It was basically the exact same, assuming they didn't go up any. This is who actually did the fire station, I believe, too, so that's, that's why we were.
Okay.
Trust the partner. All right, take a motion.
Make a motion to approve irrigation system for the police department.
I'll second it. Myers.
Yes.
Steele.
Yes.
Morris.
Yay.
Von Thayer.
Yes.
Prince.
Yay.
Tribby.
Yay.
Douglas.
Yay.
Evans.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, item number eleven, and I'm just gonna say this, uh, kind of upfront of this conversation. I know we had a long discussion last month and we went ahead and tabled it, we brought it for this one. And it would be irresponsible from the perspective of being the administrator of the city that the non-contract people do not have their raise in this city for us to continue to spend more money doing other things. This is a needed item and we have some additional conversation that we want to have. So it's still on the table to talk about, but I just want to let you know that we have over half of the rest of our employees to think about in this discussion. Even though it comes from a separate piece of the pie, we still have discussion to have. So I just want to make that clear before we open it up.
Okay.
So, item number eleven. Discussion of possible action on authorizing the chief to lease purchase the police fleet as presented by Deputy Chief Allen, approve of the supplemental appropriation in unappropriated funds and CIP budget in the amount of two, two hundred seventy-eight thousand eight hundred eighty-eight. So, if you want to come up, you can, or either way.
Either way, I'll, um, so what I proposed last time was a plan, okay? It, it doesn't have to be the plan. It was a plan because as far as we could tell, we've never had a plan. We have twenty-nine vehicles. Chief Coy can tell you when a fire truck wears out. Mike Turman can tell you when a dump truck wears, I mean, I'm sorry, garbage truck wears out and when these things need to be replaced. So what we were trying to do is present a plan so that the city knows going forward with all these vehicles, we need a plan to maintain them, a plan to replace them, and know where to budget going forward. I ran on this one. What I included this time was, last time I included a five-year, to replace vehicles every five years. This time I included to replace them every seven, just to see what it would look like. And I did that based on the numbers that Chief Anderson has ran, and we also cross-referenced those numbers with Ron's Total, who does most of our service. Vehicles, once they are over seven years old or over seventy-five thousand miles, start costing us astronomically more. I mean, we go from spending six, eight hundred dollars a year on the vehicle to spending forty-eight hundred dollars a year. And it doesn't take long for that to become just not advantageous at all. And so what I included was some pictures you guys have in your packets of the vehicles, of the mileage, how long we've owned the vehicles, and how much that particular vehicle has cost us to own. And that does not include oil changes, tires, brakes. That is to maintain that vehicle, what we have spent on it. Um, some of those vehicles are twenty-six thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars. These are numbers we've spent just to keep that car running on the road. That number becomes real astronomical when you're looking at if we purchase new vehicles, we're going to be under warranty for thirty-six thousand miles bumper to bumper, and then five-year, sixty thousand mile powertrain warranty. So when I did the seven-year plan, I looked at that the average vehicle after seven years, based on how many miles we put on them every year on an average, would have seventy-five to eighty thousand miles on it. That is that exact number where we start spending a ton more money. My vehicle, for example, just got out of the shop last week for almost three thousand dollars, and it was one of our lower mileage, but it's also older. And it, it needed a new transfer case, and I mean, it just shredded every part inside it. And those are the type of things that we start to run into, just like some of the ones I showed in those pictures. I also included the good, too. We have in that, in there is one of our newest ones that we purchased from Kansas. The problem with that vehicle was it was fifty thousand miles when we got it, and we've only owned it two and a half years and we've spent over four thousand dollars on repair. Because it was, and that vehicle currently has seventy thousand miles on it. So sixty-nine thousand, some change, I believe, so.
And you bought it with how many?
Fifty. So Kansas has figured out that they, they get rid of every car at fifty thousand miles. Because they, they know, they've done their own math and realize that's where the problems start. So basically, the proposal I showed is just kind of a recap of last time, showing the cost of leasing, showing the cost to outfit them with a seven-year rotation this time, and I ran it through year eight. So you all can actually see year eight would really be the replacement year, so you can see what it costs to actually buy. And you will see that this year, for example, I showed two hundred forty-one thousand instead of two hundred seventy-eight. That's probably not even gonna happen because we, we missed the boat already. I'm being told right now we'd be lucky to get six of the twelve. So this money would need to be appropriated to go into next year. You know, because we would be able to, you know, we'd start getting, the rest of them would start being built, I think he said, October, November. So they'd come in in that February, March of next year where we'd start outfitting them. Uh, now I can't guarantee that they won't call and say, hey, we could get all twelve. So I showed you where they are, I just know when I checked earlier this week, he was down to six right now that we could get.
I appreciate all the detail. It's very helpful, thank you.
So is it more realistic in this first year that that cost would be just like a hundred and four thousand than the two hundred?
As far as outfitting, stuff like that, yes.
Without the outfitting?
Just the, so it's two hundred forty-one thousand is what I showed. Um, I mean, I don't want to make a promise that's not true because obviously if they're there, we need to get them. But the reality with what I told, that number could be a hundred and forty-one thousand instead of two hundred forty-one.
Okay.
And, um, so, and with what Mr. Mayor had said about, you know, some of the rebranding of the city and stuff, we've actually looked at new graphics, and those are things that we can propose to y'all. I've got a couple on my phone. I actually meant to bring it where I could show them to you guys. Um, but they are, you know, they're rebranding it much more, that much better, you know, look that we're trying to get as a city as well. We could, you know, incorporate that type of stuff into the graphics, too. And I just want, if you guys look on down and you just kind of look at all the years, there's, I think the most year you would ever spend is year five, and that's three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And that's the year that you have no vehicles to sell, no vehicles to purchase, and that's, that's the lease payment. But at least you have a plan of what it is. Now, you know, the very next year that goes down and then a year after that, you're talking a hundred and forty thousand dollars is what you're spending that year for the vehicles. And then year eight, we would repurchase, and ironically, year eight, because we'd be able to sell the vehicles, you're repurchasing twelve new vehicles that year, and your cost expenditure for the year is a hundred and seven thousand dollars. So, I mean, and these are just things that you can look at and go, okay, and we can look at as a department, say, well, we need bulletproof vests this year. We need, we need, um, you know, in-car computers this year. We can start looking at these numbers and know the years that's gonna be best to budget those things or budget other items that the council wants to do. So the idea really is to present you guys with a, you know, a plan that we all know going forward. This is kind of where we are, just like we know with fire trucks, just like we know with, with garbage trucks. So.
Deputy Chief, are, are we allowed to ask questions now?
Yes.
Um, two questions. Um, one, why the twelve years, twelve vehicles at first? Is it because of the cost? And then secondly, is Ron's Total your only choice? I mean, can you find a place that's?
Ron's Total is who we've always used, okay? And as far as like, if you're looking, they, they give us obviously preferential treatment based on price, stuff like that, a wholesale price, if you will, just like any big company that, you know, would take all their vehicles to them, okay? Um, the reason for the twelve is we're not, so when I broke it down per budget, since it's seventeen thousand dollars to equip these cars, there, there's no way around that, that's just what it costs to equip the car. The idea with the twelve up front is we're not in lease payments yet, okay? So it's easier to equip those cars. And then I did take, because the first one I showed had like year or two with six vehicles, I took that down to five and really looked at how long we could take some of the couple newer cars we have and, and stretch those out. That's why I took it down to five, and then the next year I had taken it down as well from what I initially had shown. And I did that just trying to budget less money and stretch it out as far as we could. And, and if you notice in the packet, I believe five of those cars, those are just the worst ones. I showed the one twelve, that number twelve. That number twelve is trying to get rid of our problem children of cars and our oldest cars and the ones that are costing us the most money. So basically, that will only get us through, we'll have one two thousand, no, two two thousand sixteen's left if we purchase all twelve. That tells you how old our fleet is. So.
I'm sorry, my car is two thousand and seven and it's.
But it's not a police car.
True that. I, I just don't have that to wrap my head around, you know?
They, they get, they, I shouldn't say treated because these officers with the take-home cars,
Yeah.
they, they, these cars are, are taken very good care of, but they are used, they are, they are a tool.
Done a ride-along yet?
No.
So.
You should do a ride-along.
Yeah, they're a tool and, you know, they, they have to get driven the way they do, you know, at times.
Is there a reason that we have to have four-wheel drive vehicles in this city? Because let's face it, when you're on ice, four-wheel drive means absolutely nothing.
Well, you're, you're right. When you're on ice, it, it helps, but it is not, it is not the fix, it is a fix.
You, you mentioned transfer case maintenance, and that's awfully expensive in an all-wheel drive or four-wheel drive vehicle, and that contributes heavily to the, to the contribution there, so.
So what happened with the Explorers is Ford just started saying, we're gonna make them all all-wheel drive, because no one was ordering the two-wheel drives.
For fleet purposes.
Correct. And so the, the Tahos are actually four-wheel drive, which is better, meaning it's not engaged all the time. It's only engaged when we need it, so.
But even, even a horrid Tahoe through general motor, Chevy division on fleet.
Right.
Can't get these things and just.
No, we can get them in two-wheel drive, and they're about, um, since it is on state contract, I'm not exact, I can get, I can look back at that number, but it was around two thousand dollars less for, for the two-wheel drive.
But what would be the long-term?
Four thousand dollar decrease if we could get two-wheel drive instead of four-wheel drive Tahos.
Correct.
Would that, would that affect your return?
So in Oklahoma.
Your, your department's affected in terms of responding to bad weather?
Yes, and here's something I've always said personally, because I, I have four-wheel drives and I've always said you'll never say, I wish I had a two-wheel drive. You, okay?
I, I don't mind not having to pay for the transfer case.
Well, that's true, too. Um, you know, and the reality is, we will respond, and we are at work no matter what the weather is. And yes, there's been times I've seen North's Expressway in MacArthur, cars can't get up MacArthur, and we're able to drive right by them, you know, go in an emergency, then go back to try to help them. So yes, it's not that often, but, you know, they, they do get used. Probably, they, probably not this year, but this is probably one of the first years in a while I can think of that we haven't had a need for them. So.
Would that affect the exchange if you were to have two-wheel instead of four-wheel drive?
It'll affect the resale value here.
It was definitely, it, it's just like the Tahos, like I kind of explained last time versus the Explorers. That two thousand dollars we're spending now on four-wheel drive, you will get back, if not more, when you resell it. So it just depends. But, you know, there's no guarantee on the resale either. You know, I mean, it's just, if you look at it, if you go to, if you go to marketplace yourself and, and look at it, you will see typically two-wheel drives will bring less money than four-wheel drives, just like.
But do other police departments use two-wheel?
Most of the ones being ordered in the state contract are all four-wheel drive, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the two hundred and seventy-eight, eight eighty that's budget, that we're requesting, does that include the out, the outfitting?
Yes. That would be, that number is if we took delivery of twelve vehicles in September.
In September?
Of this year.
Ready to go, all outfitted?
And we start outfitting them and everything, that, that would be the number we would spend this year if we had twelve, if we had twelve vehicles that we got on the road ready to go. So that is the, the, if you will, I hate to use it, but the worst-case scenario. Okay, that's what that is. The reality is we might get four in September, we might get three in October, and two after, two in November based on availability, and then they've still gotta be outfitted. So, you know, that number to be budgeted is if somehow we were able to get all twelve, get them outfitted this year. I don't even know, you know, if we got twelve in September, most of these places are telling us, you know, two to three weeks to outfit a car. I don't, I haven't done that math, but I don't even know if we could get twelve all outfitted by the end of the year.
I'd like to commend you on the thoroughness of your work and the plan. Um, I think it was stellar. I think you did a great job and a lot of thought went into it, and something that I, as long as I've been on the council, I haven't seen a plan this well-thought-out for a while, so you are to be commended for that.
Thank you.
Pam, how are we sitting on money if we did this?
Yes, I was gonna ask Pam.
Use your mic, what did you say? Sorry.
How are we sitting on money if we approve this? Cash-wise?
It's unappropriated funds, so what, what, does that mean? So far.
Means the money's there, but we haven't appropriated for anything.
Plus, if we were only doing six vehicles? Because that's an option, too, right? To just do six vehicles this year and not the twelve?
So, so far, what we've spent is, uh, nineteen hundred and seventy-seven dollars on RIT's bag, I think. And we will have more RIT tools that are coming, so once we get those, it'll be four thousand dollars. But right now, we've only spent less than two. Garbage truck was three hundred and sixty, uh, three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Um, new signage, uh, stuff for the parks was another thirty-nine thousand dollars. And then you had twenty-four thousand and fourteen five eighty for the animal control. That's all you've spent so far.
And then, oh, hold on, Coy, what else have we spent money on? Fire truck?
They did approve, uh, for covered parking. We had a range of budgets from.
But we haven't spent it yet. That, that was my next thing I was gonna do.
Okay, well, let me tell you, though, that we did get estimates. The firefighters are gonna do the work instead of having it subcontracted, and it's gonna be ten thousand dollars or less as opposed to twenty-two thousand.
Instead of twenty-two five?
Yeah.
Okay, because that was the next thing I was gonna say, is you did approve the tasers, which I don't know how long it'll take before we.
About four months.
So, close to the end of the year.
When you mentioned garbage truck.
We will be paying the truck payment when we pick up the truck. I'm sure we're gonna be making up the hundred and forty-six thousand dollar payment.
With any fire truck.
Um, covered parking is still to come. We know you've already approved it. And now he says it's gonna be less than the twenty-two five. I think that's everything that you guys have already given permission to purchase or has already been purchased.
And as far as I know, too, we've pulled about two hundred thousand out of, like, not savings, but.
You know, you started out with three hundred and, three, over three million dollars, and so far you've spent, looking at, well, right now you've spent four hundred and thirty-six, not counting those things that I just got through saying will be coming up in the next couple of months.
Hey Pam, how much was, was there any unappropriated funds in the CIP in the budget?
What was budgeted?
Yeah.
We had budgeted two-point-eight. But like I said, every time they want to buy something, they have to come back here and ask you to make that purchase. So just because we budgeted two-point-eight, doesn't mean you're gonna spend that two-point, well, let me just put it this way. You better not spend that two-point-eight, or you won't have anything to carry over to next year.
And that was, my question is, there's no, nothing unappropriated, there's not.
The only amount, there's about six hundred thousand that has not been appropriated.
Well, that's our reserve, so that's our emergency, six hundred thousand? Nope, correct.
As I tried to explain to Roger, it, it's not emergency, it's just money that in case.
What if?
A, a car blows up and have to go replace the car. Or some, something breaks down.
Tornadoes.
I know, we like to try to keep it around.
CIP is gonna replace it.
Like, try to keep it around a million, million one, million two, correct? Uh, just for lack of terminology, reserve, just what-if fund? Am I correct on that?
I'm not sure, I'm not.
That's a Crawford question.
Okay, my question is, for, for money that's sitting there for just what-if, like when we had all the tree removal.
Storm debris.
That was, storm debris, that was a million bucks.
The storm debris, that's a whole total different fund.
I understand that.
For an emergency, like a disaster emergency. When I say this is just money that you had available that you didn't appropriate, we try to save some of that because if a, a garbage truck.
Correct.
Gets wrecked or whatever, we're gonna get some insurance money, but you're gonna need some money to pay for it. So that's why I always like to try to keep some in there that is not already appropriated. And then, like I said, the guys, normally they do not spend half. half of this. They put the request in, one reason or another, something happens and you can't go get it this year. So it gets carried over to next year because things just didn't work out to where they could ask for it. So a lot of times we'll see things carrying over from year to year. And again, like I said, you don't, you, you're only putting a little less than a mil, around nine hundred and some thousand dollars in there currently, every year. So.
So if he, if we do approve this, then this year we'd only be having to pay the thirty seven thousand?
And bring it down to three hundred and some that's not appropriated.
Okay, and then, so next year wouldn't be as bad because we could appropriate it, or could we?
Well, and, and let me ask Pam a question that might help shed some light. Does CIP bring in, you said it was two point eight we appropriated? CIP doesn't bring in two point eight a year in revenue.
Yeah, nine hundred.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you're appro, you're, you're appropriating two point eight million dollars when you're only making about nine hundred and fifty, nine hundred and seventy five thousand a year.
Because we keep carrying.
It's rollover essentially.
And so you've got a lot of these appropriations that have sat there and, and they roll from year to year. I mean, just, we don't have the audit from last year, but looking at the one the year before, it looks like we've roughly spent about what we've brought in year over year. I mean, sometimes a little bit more, sometimes a little bit less, but we, we've got savings there, but it's.
I should've put that together.
Don't, don't think that you got two point eight every year that you can spend.
Yeah, so it's only around nine hundreds, less than a million dollars.
Okay. At one point I did put something together that showed on average what we've spent over the last five years, but I didn't grab that before I come in here.
And month, month over month, I noticed we've got a small decrease in our sales tax and looked like use tax for the last two months.
Is it because of the grocery thing?
Well, if you notice on the budget for CIP, twenty twenty three, we brought in nine hundred and ninety thousand, but when I did the budget, I only put nine hundred. I try to be very conservative on that and, and I'm glad because places like Moe's has been closed now for
A month and a half.
A month or more. Walgreens, I went there one day, they were closed, they had a flood, they were closed for at least a week, if not longer. So, uh, it's just those little things. I'm not, the thing not gonna be.
You're making Pam nervous. Cut it out.
Mean mom, but I don't see any new revenue coming in, other than the grocery store.
And we don't know that for the next three months.
And we won't know exactly what they're gonna bring.
No, trick too, yeah.
We need business.
So if we, if we approve year one, we're not necessarily approving, we're only committing to that as far as the additional purchase of new cars.
Year after year after year after year.
Technically, you are correct. Practically, you're not. Technically, you're correct and that's why it's a lease instead of a, 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 a financing of it, cause you can't incur debt. So if you only approved the year one payment, then in, in year two, they take the cars back. So at a bare minimum.
I'm just saying, okay, so year one is the twelve cars, so when we get to thirteen, fourteen and fifteen, we're not necessarily approving them right now.
Right, but you would still be debt, practically speaking, morally speaking, even if not legally speaking, you'd be committing to a bare minimum of funding the ongoing payments for those twelve cars. And so.
Which would be how, which would be how much?
The ongoing payment for the twelve is, so it would show in year two, a hundred and forty nine thousand.
So a hundred and forty nine thousand.
I think what she's saying is, if I understand you correct, and that's why I said this is just a plan, is if we get twelve now or we get six and we have to roll five over to Ja- January or six over to January, cause that's all we can get and we decide not to buy anything in year two, then yes, you, we don't, you don't have to buy anything in year two, we could roll that to year three. You still have the payments for the twelve that we bought, which would be a hundred and forty nine thousand.
Okay, thank you.
So that's for twelve, so correct me if I'm wrong, so if we were doing six, that'd take it down to seventy thousand, if we took it down to three, that would take it down to, so.
Correct.
Correct.
But this is also gonna have a non appropriation clause, is it?
Yeah, it, it's a lease, I mean, literally, that's the whole reason why you avoid debt limitation is you're not bound into the next year because you don't own the car.
But they can take the cars back.
I thought it was like a payment.
I understand.
It was like a loan, yeah.
It wasn't here.
Yeah, you were, were you here last night?
No.
Not for the, uh, special meeting.
Yeah, I mean, our, our, the city of War Acres is going to be on the title for those vehicles.
Yeah, but for all intents and purposes, if we don't make the payment, they go away.
They go away.
It's not, it's not a lease, we don't get to return the vehicles under any circumstances.
Yeah, and a lease to me means they'll fix it, whatever, but this is like, we're just, got a car payment.
We handle the repairs.
Right. And we don't have to give it back.
Yeah, just remember the only thing is for the warranty will be covered to thirty sixty thousand miles.
Right.
So through GM.
And how long do you anticipate that sixty thousand miles to run up on our new cars?
Oh, it just depends on the vehicle and what it's driven, around four to five years depending on the exact vehicle.
How many extra miles do you think?
Eight square miles. Doesn't matter how fast you go.
How much mileage is put on by officers taking them home, do you think?
I would say on an average, and this would be just a, a rough average of where all the officers live, I would maybe say twenty miles a day.
Each?
Each.
Okay, so.
Is there a limit on how far an officer can live and still take a car home?
Yes. Yes, we have the limit of fifteen miles as a crow flies, which is kind of the average for the entire metro.
Yeah.
As far as what other agencies are doing too with their take homes.
Right.
I just wanna say that I really, really like this plan and it's, in my opinion, bad timing in our budget. And it sucks because I think that the department does need this and I think we could benefit from it. Can we start the five year plan next year? Is that an option maybe?
Prices would be higher next year.
Oh, really?
What about starting a one year plan and get a few new cars and not lock in to everything else? Just get a few new cars and get.
Yeah.
How many do you think? Six, three, twelve?
No, I'm thinking four.
Four?
And start a rotation at that amount?
I'm torn because we have invested a lot into our fire and our police departments and we have not equally done the same amount of investment in our other departments and that's what has me right now not, um, not a full yes.
I do like the long term plan though, how you had that far out. That's a good vision.
Thing that we need to take into consideration is how much money is going out the door in maintaining these older vehicles that we can take that money and apply it to the new cars.
And that's why I kinda wanted to show you the cars and what they've cost us. And that, that is, that is a concern because I mean, every time one breaks, we don't have anything to, we don't have another car.
Yeah.
So our only, our only thing we can do is continue to fix that car.
You will save money from your general fund by having new cars because all repairs and maintenance on all the vehicles comes out of general fund.
Oh, okay.
General fund is your daily operational fund. Anything and everything that happens in this city on a daily basis comes out of general fund. So.
So technically, so what do, I didn't add up the numbers, so whenever it came to the total number that we spent on vehicle repairs out of the general fund, about what, what is that number?
It's a, it's, this year's gonna be higher because we've had some already, but it averages about forty two thousand dollars.
Forty two thousand a year.
That is not brakes, tires and stuff, that is actual repairs.
Right, which is regular maintenance. Right, so.
Not all changes.
Forty two thousand versus a hundred and seventy thousand dollar payment? For all twelve? Is, am I right? Did I number right? Okay.
I have a math question. Uh, you said we had six hundred thousand unappropriated and if we did this, would that take almost half?
Yes.
Originally Patty had thirty thousand appropriated for vehicles this year, right? And then you had come up with this plan and asked for more money, that was last month?
He was planning for one used vehicle from, and we now know that you couldn't even buy a used vehicle from Kansas for thirty.
The Kansas, I did call Kansas, just to be able to give you guys, you know, if y'all had questions. The cars from Kansas are now thirty three thousand. It would still cost seventeen thousand dollars to outfit that car, that number doesn't change. So it may change by, I just, let me say, depending if they had a bumper already on them and stuff, it may change by fifteen hundred dollars or something, but let's just assume depending on what car we got from Kansas. Kansas also told me we would be number fifty in line to even try to get a car from them.
Wow. So the cars you wanted to buy?
And I, then I think they're assuming we would only get two or three.
Oh.
And so I don't know what they would even say if I said, well, I need, and then the problem becomes with Kansas, since there's no lease or no, no payment option, you're writing a check. And if you just do the math in your head, if you just tried to buy six cars from Kansas at thirty three thousand dollars and outfit those six cars, we're now spending three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a car that's already, on six cars that are already half worn out. And, and then we would have to do that again next year for six more. We'd have to do it again next year for, and so we are actually spending out of the budget and why I think.
You're over a year more.
Early, earlier even with the garbage truck or what we do with the fire truck is when you're, it's a different way of thinking, understanding that and that, you know, but when you're financing them out, it makes it so much easier on your budget than it does just writing cold hard, you know, cash checks for them. So.
True, which I, is the reason why I appreciate the plan. It's a good plan. Um, really comes down to probably just budget at this moment in time. Like I said, the reason why I don't want this to get pushed through at this moment in time, it's additional, you know, Von Thayer, you and I talked, you said, you know, what would two or three look like? You know, to at least start the process to start that, I don't disagree with that because I know we need them. And that payment would cover at least part of those really bad vehicles, right? So we're at almost a net zero, which makes sense. Um. Again, the things that we are currently in, we're still in negotiations with contracts and non contracts still need to be taken care of and.
Negotiations for what?
For union contracts. Which is November, I think, so kinda whenever we get to that point, finalize again.
I believe that has to be turned in in August and then usually the, the negotiation will start in, uh, you know, September, something like that.
So that's just something that you guys don't know about, that you guys need to be aware of. Like there's other things in the future that we have to deal with. So, um, I'll go ahead and take, if nobody else has any other discussion, my personal preference is that we take no action on this so that we can bring it up at a later date and we'll talk and have a little bit more of a discussion to come back with numbers that are more reasonable for the budget for us. Is that agreeable?
I have one more question. Just to clarify, if we got the new cars, they're like ready to sell us, um, they're available, we don't have to wait?
Um, the earliest we would get new cars right now is September.
September, October, yeah.
And I believe we'd only be able to get four to six.
Okay.
Um, and then you're talking for those four to six, we're legitimately probably a couple of months to have those outfitted. And then once they, as they were outfitted, we could start selling some of the cars that those were replacing.
So maybe we should talk about amending it to get fewer cars.
Well, I would rather, because you guys really like a lot of detail and if he can bring those exact numbers back, we can, if we take no action, we can bring it up next month. If we table it, we can say it comes back next month. Which would you, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion for either or.
We've already tabled it once.
Yeah, and it's very detailed.
Yes.
What did, what did it look like for four vehicles? For the first year?
Yeah, to amend it.
I think, didn't you say?
I can tell you almost exactly.
I got like ninety.
But didn't you say then it starts the diminishing returns because you're still having the expense of the dogs that we have?
That's, the problem is, and it's like when we found in the budget that we had one car budgeted for thirty, I walked outside and I looked to my, and I thought to myself, what car am I gonna replace? Which one of these bad cars am I replacing because I've got, I mean, you saw the mileage on it, we got multiple cars, a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and fifty four thousand, a hundred and seventy five thousand. I mean, it's like what car was I going to replace with, with one?
They said around, around the three car, around the three car mark is almost a net zero to get rid of the three dogs, right?
Yeah, so you're, you're. Yeah, so if we did, if we did four cars, for example, that'd be a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and that's for the full year. That's the outfit them and the lease payment on them for the full year.
And then what's the second year?
And then the second year would only be about a hundred fifty, well, be fifty thousand.
So that'd be almost at the net zero at that point. Ish.
Yeah.
With, you know, God being involved.
It's not, not technically net zero, only because it'd be a net fifty on CIP and potentially a net positive on general.
Yeah, right. Yeah, different budgets, different boxes.
Money on general fund and committing money on CIP. I, I will say just as a matter of technical procedure, if you table this item, then this item comes up at the next month or wherever you table it to. If what you're looking at is, or wanting to look at is having some sort of a modified plan, it wouldn't be to table this item, cause this item's for two seventy eight, eight eighty.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you would take, if what you're wanting is to discuss that future month, some different plan, you wouldn't table this item, you would just ask for an item, not in the form of a motion, but I think everybody would read the room and realize there'd need to be an item next month, just with different verbiage.
Yeah.
But technically, when you table, you are tabling the item that is before you and so that exact item comes back.
So no action would allow for a new.
A new item.
Item to come up.
Different worded item.
It's up to you. Make your choice.
I prefer no action.
Yeah. No action, so you can bring it back.
I'd like to see the numbers where you work with the four cars, four vehicles for the first year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what do y'all wanna see? See like four and six?
Yeah. Yeah.
See the.
Yeah.
Let's try three and six.
Three and six, okay.
Do we have to vote on the no action?
No, it's just no, no action taken.
We don't vote on that?
But, the, what you can vote on tonight is two hundred and seventy eight thousand eight eighty. And so that's, that's why I was suggesting not tabling it, cause then you get the exact item as opposed to if you want something different. So say that on the ordinance tonight, on, on the dogs, you wanted something completely different, you want something on running at large, well, then what I would've told you is, we're, let's not take action on that and let's bring you a different ordinance the next month.
Could we make, for this, if it fails, then he comes back the next month for some?
Why would you rather, why would you have a no vote and a fail vote?
So, so, uh, honestly, uh, councilwoman, we come back next month, you're not happy with how, how that goes and you want this item back, any one council member could request an item for the agenda, so. Yeah, if, if you table it, it, this exact item is guaranteed to be on whatever meeting agenda you table it to. If you don't table it, but then you're not happy with the item that comes before you, you or any of your colleagues can always ask for an item.
But I was, what I, and maybe I'm not clear, but if we voted on it and it failed, he then can present it again to us next month as a different.
He can present something new.
Or we can do.
Which is basically no action, same thing.
Yeah, same thing. From, from procedural standpoint, if you affirmatively kill something, then it cannot come back before you. It, it can on a motion to reconsider, which gets complicated, but.
So no action.
What I'm, what I'm hearing is that if there wasn't an action tonight, you would have an item on your agenda next month for some options to consider.
So can we say, you know, making a motion for reconsideration for next month?
You, you wouldn't do that in the form of a motion. I mean, I think there's plenty, I, I'm pretty sure Jason is picking up on what the council is saying that he, he needs to bring you some new, some additional options for next month.
I'm ready to vote on it as it is. I don't know if there's anybody else.
His two seventy eight number, he even admitted to us in the last, Rob, that that was a overestimated number.
Correct.
Should actually come in lower.
Should come in the two forties or lower, and because that's.
Twenty five percent of our actual budget.
That two seventy eight's assuming we took delivery of twelve vehicles in September, which we've already been told won't happen. I just can't, I just don't want to say it abs, because what if he calls and says, hey, we can get it, but as of right now, they are not available. And almost like with Kansas, we would literally have our name on a list. So I didn't, I don't know the procedure of it, but if you were gonna vote for those twelve, we would then need to make sure that we're, if we're, that's what we were going to do, that we're thinking about how we're going to budget that for next year because those will come available. Say we got four now, eight more will come available in January. Ish, could be February, and then we start outfitting those and selling and stuff, so.
So.
To that point, you, effectively, if you were, if you were to approve this tonight, you'd be voting on it effectively again every year when it came time for the budget.
And the only problem I have with the fact that we're talking about twelve cars, even though there's the gap and everything, is that that's twenty five percent of our entire CIP budget coming in.
Revenue.
And then every year you're talking about twenty percent going to payments.
Already gone.
Already gone. That's nothing for public works, that's nothing for.
Of the revenue.
Of the revenue, right, of incoming revenue. That's nothing for streets, that's nothing for sewer, that's nothing for CIP, for public works, for the fire.
Does open up some general fund money for your reasons.
Forty thousand dollars doesn't go anywhere hardly. It's, yeah, it's substantially low. I mean, it's good, every penny counts, but when it.
It's a million dollars to research this mile of, or they paving.
Right, which is also CIP and people complain a lot more about roads than.
Yeah.
The look of our police cars.
So. You said you're ready to make a motion, minors?
I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to, um. Do the lease purchase for police vehicle, police fleet for two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Authorizing the chief to move forward and, uh, the approving supplemental appropriation.
Okay.
If this gets voted down, we can do a new one?
Yes.
Yes.
If the motion gets voted down, then the item's still up for discussion and debate. But of course, if it gets voted down, then there's not much reason for continued debate, but technically there wouldn't. Technically, you would not have taken an action.
He can come back with it.
Yeah, so it's making, so Myers is making a motion and we'll vote it however you guys are gonna vote, or we can not take action and have the same result. So, but we have a second?
I'm sorry, was there a second?
No, wait a second.
I did this off there for a minute.
All right, with no second being made, let's go ahead and, uh, no action, I, no action taken on the item. Item number sixteen, questions and comments from the council. Prince.
Appreciate all the good work that our city workers do and I did see our grant writer here, is he gonna make a presentation?
Yeah, he, no, he was here, he needed to go. But he was here. If you guys have any questions, you can reach out to him.
Do we have?
He's not available, sorry.
Do we have any good news from our grant writer?
Uh, yeah, I had a email today with Chief Coy about a grant for the fire department.
Yeah, we were gonna look into getting four sets of bunker gear through the firehouse subs grant. So I'm, I'm gonna get some quotes and he's gonna do some grant writing.
That's about how much do you estimate probably?
Thirty-two, no, they went up, thirty-five hundred dollars per set, it'll be about fourteen thousand dollars worth.
Awesome, cool, thank you. Anything else, Prince? Thank you. Von Thayer?
Again, just wanna thank everybody, y'all. Please, fire, you guys are awesome. Mike, you guys just do a great job. Pam, you and your crew, I can't say enough, thank you very much, and the council, thank you.
Douglas?
I wanna thank everybody for all their hard work and, um, I was looking over the code enforcement and Cheryl's been doing a great job this month. Um, going out and, uh, putting little pink signs on everyone's window for non-compliance. And I went to the Southwest Regional Economic Development Association meeting last week. And learned a lot about, um, economic development revolving loan funds, which can help our city either help. We can, we can apply for them or small businesses can apply for them and we can get as much as a third of the grant. Say we wanna get seven hundred and fifty thousand, they'll give us two hundred and fifty thousand, um, for economic development. So that's my primary interest is getting new businesses.
Yeah, thank you for going and doing that.
It was great.
It was good. It was hosted here in Oklahoma, it was hosted in Louisiana last time, so. Myers?
Thank you to all the employees. Jason, again, you did a great job. Um, thank you, Mike, for getting my spray paint taken care of.
We're working on it.
Oh, we keep getting gang tagged, yeah.
They're not very good, are they?
So thank you all very much. That's all.
Myers?
I'm thankful to the mayor for all the logistics he does, talking to everybody about all the stuff that we need to get done. Thank you Pam for your hard work, keeping the number crunching going on and all the leaders. Director Tyrman and Deputy Chief and Chief, thank you for your hard work and, and research, all the stuff you're presenting to us. It's a pleasure to be on the council, hard work, but I love it.
Good. Tribby?
Uh, I, I wanna give, uh.
Use your mic, please.
Sorry, sorry.
Pam needs it.
I, I wanna give, uh, uh, big kudos to Councilwoman Steele for making us a member of the Purple, for making the city of War Acres. Member of the Purple Heart Society, these are nice, uh, that guy. And, 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 and in spirit of that, I wanna make very sure. All the members of this council recognize, there's a street in this city. That is named after the sixteenth superintendent of the United States Military Academy, the commander of the Philippine Department, the thirteenth chief of staff of the army. The United States Military Advisor to the Philippines, the first supreme commander for the allied powers. The commander of the Far East Command, the commander of the United Nations Command, and the governor of the Ryukyu Islands, which was General Douglas MacArthur. So I hope that now that we are a member of the Purple Heart Society, that the name of that boulevard will never change. That's all I have to say.
That's a good.
Steele?
Um, I just wanna thank all of my fellow council members and members of the city that put in the work every day to make sure our city runs. Operates and, um, continue to thrive. Um, I've been spending a lot of time doing this Route sixty-six festival and it is coming. I actually have this much more hope than I had last month. Uh, we finalized a lot of things, we have a lot of marketing stuff going out, I was able to go speak with the Northwest Chamber to get some businesses to come in. Was pretty promising this week and then I ran into the Advanced Auto Parts passing out flyers and they are looking to partner with our animal shelter. To help raise funds for our shelter as well as do a Coffee and Cars Adoption Day for animals at our shelter, so. I'd love to get with you more about that and help support our animal shelters, so. I think that has been a really great team effort that we've, that we've really accomplished as a council before me, so. Thank you for the time and the opportunity to serve.
Evans?
I'm just looking forward to the audit coming out, being completed, so he can see where we are.
That's upbeat, man.
I wanna know where we are and you don't know until the audit's done and the numbers are posted. So we wanna know where our budgets are, we've got a copy of a new budget. And we don't have the audited last year's expenses yet, so, yeah, timing's.
Yeah, I've had your budget in there for, ever since you, the first meeting and I just kept forgetting to give it to you.
So, yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's it, thanks.
I want to say thank you to everybody for showing up, taking the time and energy and effort to be here and it makes a big difference. Thank you for all the detailed reporting that staff does. To make sure that, uh, the city runs effective and efficiently and, um. Y'all better settle down or Pam's gonna quit, so. With that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
She's the queen.
Motion to adjourn.
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
He actually said yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Steele?
Yay.
Prince? Myers?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mayor Supreme.
All right.
Technically, I think Mike made a motion.
He did. All right, call to order the, uh, War Acres Public Works Authority meeting, uh, declare quorum, consent docket, items may be deleted from the consent docket. Under discussion, action, item number three, do I have a motion? To pay our bills. And minutes.
Sorry.
I have a motion to pay our bills.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, I'll go ahead and second it.
Good. Evans?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Steele?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Item number four, SRB, uh, report for wastewater master plan program, that's Amanda. Coy, thank you. Oh, well, she's just getting bored, all right. Thank you for coming and hanging out. That girl deserves a medal for sitting.
She's so cute. Hello. Hello, hello. All right, I will do my best to keep this concise.
Are you done yet?
Almost. All right, so updates on, oh yay, it changed the formatting just slightly. Okay, well, that's cool. All right, so handed out a copy of the presentation to you all. So just updates on how the twenty twenty-four sanitary sewer evaluation study and the wastewater master plan are coming along. So on the sanitary sewer evaluation study, the manhole inspections are substantially completed. They in, inspected eight hundred and seventy-six manholes. There are still some missing that we're hoping to find with CCTV inspections. And for the CCTV inspections and cleaning, they have completed a little less than half. Forty-two thousand ninety-seven linear feet out of one hundred thousand linear feet in the contract. And so far, they have found several major defects, large, um, large holes, collapses. In one case, there is a suspected gas line running through a main, that's what's in the picture. So, yeah, I heard that, that, that is being investigated to figure out who owns that gas line. Did you guys find an answer?
Is this the one on the expressway?
I think so.
Uh, there's two, uh, their communication cables.
Okay.
ONG came out immediately, they did a wonderful job and made sure there was no hazard to, they were out immediately.
Awesome. Okay, so OGN is on it. And then for smoke testing, they completed the majority of the system with one hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-four linear feet. Not that anyone's counting specifics. Uh, and some quick results, I have not seen any of the results myself. But, uh, one house was found to have tied in their gutters to the sanitary sewer system. And, uh, the crew let them, let Public Works know about that. And they found a major storm structure had smoke come out of it, which indicated that there was some sort of connection between the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer system, which there is not supposed to be. At all. And then a manhole that's located near a creek didn't have a lid at all.
Oh.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Is this the caps?
I'm not sure, they didn't tell me which one.
Mike looks happy, like.
Look at your face.
It's like not even nearby, manhole cover?
Like it's.
It's probably in the caps area where's, where there's no traffic, where it's all heavily wooded and. We found, uh, open holes, there's been like three in the past five years, so.
Wow.
So those are some immediately, immediate results that we have from the sanitary sewer evaluation study. So what's happening next with it? We are going, we are prioritizing the manholes that need replacement rehab, such as the one that's missing, it's lit.
Amanda, Evan's having a question.
Oh, yes.
That's okay. Um, I was just gonna ask, you've identified these items that are deficient. Are you gonna propose a rough estimate of what it would take to fix that so that we can start looking at? The money that's gonna be required to repair these?
Why, yes, yes, we will. And we will even propose a phasing plan. So yes, we're gonna prioritize the manholes that need replacement rehabilitation. We will be reviewing the smoke testing results and the CCTV results. And then we're going to incorporate those results and recommendations for fixing problems into the wastewater master plan report. So are there any questions on the sanitary sewer evaluation study? Like it's not completely done, there's more CCTV work to be done and a little bit of follow-up on smoke testing. So that is still in progress.
So are, are people still aiding or are they, is their portion done?
Well, they, they were in the smoke testing phase, so they didn't need much help to smoke test. They've done some traffic control for the camera truck on the main streets like six or sixty-third and MacArthur. So the last two months have been kind of minimal, about thirty hours.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to the wastewater master plan update. Finally, the model is like really, really substantially complete, our subcontractor turned in a draft report to us. And I, along with another engineer at SRB, we met with Mike and some of his guys to talk about projects that. We think would be good based on results from the model and what his guys have experienced out in the fields. And so we have several projects identified with input from the city and the model. And we are very actively working on the draft report. So briefly, the model that has been in progress all this time, yes. Our modeler ran several scenarios, lots and lots of scenarios, so. He tested what's called a one-year storm, which is basically, there's like a ninety percent chance that this amount of rain is going to fall. All the way up to a one-hundred-year storm, which is basically there's a one percent chance that this storm will occur. And so then if a one-year storm happened in an hour versus if a one-year storm happened over twelve hours versus if it happened over twenty-four hours. So basically from a very little amount of rain up to a whole lot of rain. To kind of figure out a worst-case scenario to really stress the system to find out where there might be problems. That's not to say that there are actually problems at these locations. It's just to stress the model and see what the model gets back. Because I will say Mike and his guys have done an excellent job managing the sanitary sewer system and there have been very few problems with it overall. This is just what the model is saying. So, yes.
I have a quick question here, we just had this discussion a while ago that the storm sewer does not tie into the sanitary sewer.
Correct.
So what, when we're looking at storm scenarios, what are we, what are we looking at, I guess, is my question?
Flow and infiltration of rainwater into the sewer lines.
How does rainwater get into the sewer?
Manholes seeping into the ground and cracks in your pipes and it seeps in there.
Okay, but that should not be a significant amount of water, should it?
Well.
It shouldn't be.
If you had a brand-new system with all new pipes.
It's still gonna leak.
But you don't. Everybody's got I and I, unfortunately.
The, the, the pipes are not that big. When you look at the charge, you, you've got six-inch, ten-inch. So you're looking at an eight-inch pipe and you got some fifteen-inch pipes, so it's not a tremendous, if it was completely full, it's not really that much water, but. The infiltration like, uh, our system is sixties, which we have a lot of bricks.
And i- is this really a concern? I mean, that we have storm water into our sewers?
Well, we have to process it at the plant, but we have to overflow the DEQ.
So Randy, the reason that they're doing smoke testing, you know, what, what is smoke testing? It's designed to send smoke in there to see where it comes out, because it shouldn't be coming out. If, if your lines were perfect, the smoke wouldn't be coming out and the smoke testing would tell you you had a perfect line. The smoke testing is, I'm assuming, told you that you've got cracks in the lines, which are how water infiltrates into the system.
It's, it's, it's a nineteen-sixty system, now the DEQ is trying to minimize bacteria from sanitary sewer overflows on our storm water program. So that's an actual specific item in the report that we have to address.
Right, but I'm assuming that since we do have problems with our sewer system, that there's groundwater, water entering into our sewer system.
It's very possible because the pipes are joined at joints and, uh, cracks and so forth.
Is that kind of what you're trying to explain to us here, that this storm water comes either from groundwater or from water entering into manholes?
I think she's simulating a storm event, like our system doesn't overflow till we get about two inches of rain in about a thirty-minute period.
Which is a lot.
If you've got, if you've got a manhole cover missing, that's a lot of water coming into the system.
Well, if it's just flowing to it, if it's just, it could be elevated, I mean, if it's in a low point, it, it could be, if it's in a low point.
I was just trying to clarify because I've always thought that this storm water somehow fed into the sewer system.
It, it used to, didn't it?
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't.
And the sewer treatment plant is running pretty close to capacity all the time. And it goes over capacity when the storm hits and they have to divert this into holding ponds and hopefully they can get it down enough to treat it. Bring it back in and treat it. Right now, they're not being able to get that back in or re-treat it because they're running at maximum capacity. So that's why this storm water getting in is killing us at the treatment plant.
Understand, okay. I understand. Okay.
I, 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 I attend the Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority. And what the councilman is saying is currently, War Acres, along with Bethany, you are in a consent order because of excessive I and I that is going from both cities into the wastewater plant. And that was what initiated this, because Bethany is already in a consent order over their failure to address the I and I, and their failure to do a model, and their failure to do any type of rehab. Okay, so they ended up in a twenty-five-year consent order by the EPA, which mandated them to do a certain amount. So, they were having to then, you know, do those repairs. This project is trying to avoid the city of War Acres getting put into a mandatory consent order. And our problem right now is that wastewater plant is at maximum capacity, and they were not even treating all of the water. It was being allowed to discharge and bypass into the creek, which was another violation, which the city absorbed their share of a three-hundred-thousand-dollar fine for discharging. So, I and I is the ultimate culprit, and we're, we've got to address it or we will be dictated by the EPA to do it, so.
All right, okay.
But, but the ten million is only gonna go so far.
What's the picture of smoke testing?
A- a- absolutely. The ten million that we talked about when we did the rate increase is only, it's only getting, going to go so far. But what, what Amanda is talking about is that we're gonna, we're gonna hopefully have more CCTV, and this takes hours and hours of footage for us to go through. You're gonna have more identified areas to be able to put on a project list to where we can go pursue more funding later on.
As, as we, as we have this model, we're able to say, hey, in the future, we already have things sitting on the table, sitting on the shelf, ready to go. Like, I was talking with, uh, Mark today and some other cities. I asked, hey, do you guys do anything with this? And they all tell me no. They're not doing the planning like we are with the ARPA money. So, whenever old WRB or other forms of loan forgiveness, we are applying for a million-dollar forgiveness this year and next year and the year after that. We have plans in place where other cities don't, so we're in an advantage by, by doing all this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Essentially, here, and it's probably not gonna be this few, but here are the fifty areas that are contributing I and I to the system. Here's number one. Here's number two. So, you know, you can't do all fifty. Here are the ones where you can get the most bang for your buck.
Something along those lines, yes.
Layman's terms. We're not engineers.
So, talking about I and I, here is a nice, pretty map from the modeler. Blue, overall, very little I and I. Yellow, there's more significant I and I. And then red, there's a lot of I and I. Now.
It makes sense based on the, say what?
Ward four.
From the smell. But no, based, no, based on the years that the houses were put in.
City hall, that's why you smell.
Yeah, I mean, the houses in the red area were mostly built in the nineteen forties.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and then you go further north, and they're built fifty, sixty, seven, yeah.
Yes. So, I will say that the I and I in the model cannot be, we can't know exactly which pipes are contributing to it, because it's just a computer model. That's why the SSES is so helpful, because it's letting us know exactly which pipes have the most damage, which manholes have exactly the most damage. So, this is pairing really well with that SSES that's going along. That said, for O D E Q, we've got to write this report and get that submitted. And so, just to start, we have five projects identified, four are actual specific projects, and then the fifth one is more broad. And so, the first one is, there is a four-inch line at Northwest Fiftieth and Meridian, serving a strip mall.
Oh, four?
Yes.
And that's War Acres on, at Fiftieth and Meridian? That's kind of our borderline.
On the southwest corner, yes. That is the place.
Dewey. We got Dewey's spot.
Yeah, um.
The floor, floral place.
That line is grossly undersized, and Mike and his guys mentioned time and time again that they have to keep going out there and fixing it and unclogging it, and it is just a headache. And so, that is, it's a relatively short line. It's a relatively easy fix that we propose going after right away.
Where does it come from? Where does it go?
We, it's just super short.
A long Meridian or is it a long Fiftieth?
It starts on Fiftieth and then goes down Meridian, just, just a little bit.
Does it take the sewer from Putman City High School?
No.
Okay. Cause it. That's just like that convenience store there that does the, it's off and all. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Where does our sewer system start at? Does it start over like on Thirty-Sixth Street?
Just out of curiosity, how, what kind of line does it feed into?
Starts down at Thirty-Four.
Thirty-Four.
I think it feeds into a twelve-inch.
There, there is some cross ties from Bethany.
It's just hilarious.
Who the heck installed it?
They have found the missing cross connection that we can't see. There could be a cross connection, Oklahoma City.
Think there is, or there is not?
I've heard rumors of it, but we don't have cameras, so we won't actually look for it.
Think we'll be able to?
That's what the camera report.
It was supposed to, but I haven't heard, I, I don't know those results yet.
Court back yet?
Correct.
They were just down there actually today or yesterday, Thirty-Sixth.
I've heard, you know, I've been around War Acres for a long time, and I heard that Oklahoma City did have some feed into the War Acres sewer system at one time. And I don't know if it's still true or not, but that's what I heard.
Oklahoma City does have some connections, though most of what they have feeding in is on the joint interceptor between War Acres and the treatment plant.
The trust line.
The treatment plant.
Yes, ba- basically, our main line, once it leaves our city, isn't our line, it's the trust. And they have some customers they pick up between the two cities and the plant.
But I do know that Oklahoma City wants to stop that and get their own customers on their own system.
Interesting.
Take revenue from the trust.
Does the trust actually get revenue from those customers?
Well, they have rates. Got some customers.
Okay.
That's what I've been told, at least over the years.
Yeah, we got a couple of apartments on that.
No, I mean, the trust itself, I think, has some customers.
Yeah.
Between the city and.
Between the city and the plant.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so, the second quick, easy project is the library service line and the lines immediately around it. There is an eight-inch line that is in between two ten inches, like, ten, then it goes down to eight, and then it goes back up to ten, which.
Weird.
Just right in front of the library.
How long is it?
It's not, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I would say probably between one hundred and five hundred feet.
This little choke point, or narrows down before going back.
Yeah, and then the library service line, the Public Works staff said that they are going out there all the time to unclog it, because it is sometimes used as the, people flush things down the toilets of the library. And so, it would be nice if that line were just a little bit bigger to help things move along. So, we propose, what we'll actually end up proposing is that the four-inch line and the library service line be combined into one project, because for a contractor, that's easier to handle two super small projects in kind of one go. So, that's technically two projects that will be built into one bigger project that we can knock out, we believe, pretty easily, also, you know, relatively. Then, the interceptor north of Sixty-Third Street, so actually picking up where the caps middle, where. The next item on the agenda is to approve that twenty-one-inch interceptor bid that will hopefully start construction next month. Just keep on fixing the rest of that sewer line. And then, once that's fixed, it would be good to drop down south of Fifty-Eighth Street and work on the interceptor going back upstream. And then, from there, also using results from the CCTV and smoke testing, is reducing infiltration and inflow in the southern part of the system. So, those are five projects so far that we have identified. The interceptor replacement will be a little bit more, but we will come up with estimated costs for fixing all of that and a phasing plan. So, we are pretty much getting so close to the end, so we're gonna finish up with the projects, establishing the costs, developing recommendations, and developing a phasing plan. Then, we will review the draft report with Mike and his guys, the mayor, anybody else who wants to read a copy of this. In advance, we will be happy to discuss it with you, and then we will present the final draft to the council.
Thank you, Amanda.
That's what I, that is my update.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, item number five, discussion of possible action on awarding the sewer project of War Acres twenty twenty-two zero one, bid to Craft, uh, Craft Reynolds Construction in the amount of two million, two thirty-four, third, uh, four thirty-five.
How many companies did we have in at this project?
Nine, but only one submitted a bid.
What?
Nine came out, one submitted, right?
Correct. I reached out to the contractors who came to the pre-bid meeting but did not bid, and one of them, they were interested in it, but they do not do any open trenching at all. And they are out of Texas, and they're trying to establish a foothold here in Oklahoma. And so, they decided this was too much. Several others, they just have too much work on their plates. They were selected as low bidder for several other projects. They don't have a ton of crews, and so they just didn't want to take on this project.
Everyone's working on the sewer projects everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
But it went up by a quarter of a million for the bid.
Yeah, it did go up. Well, yeah, it went up a little bit from last year. Same contractor was a low bidder last year.
Doubled.
And so, it's just inflation, rising labor costs, it went up.
All right, looking for a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Evans?
Yes.
Steel?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Van Thayer?
Yes.
Myers?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mission approved.
All right, uh, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're adjourned. Uh, City War Acres Economic Development Authority.
Adjourned. I'm just getting back to adjourn.
Man, fine, y'all want to go away? Like, who wants to vote, or?
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you. All right, ready to go.
I second.
Yes. Run that side.
Sorry. Morris?
Yay.
Steel?
Yay.
Prince?
Hey.
Douglas?
Yay.
Van Thayer?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mission approved.
All right, call to order, declare quorum. Item number two, the consent docket. Individual items may be deleted from the consent docket. Action item number three, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve consent docket A through C.
Thank you. Second.
Evans?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Van Thayer?
Hey.
Douglas?
Yay.
Prince?
Hey.
Steel?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mission approved.
Item number four, adjournment?
Second.
That was a tie.
Douglas?
Uh, I don't think we've been here long enough.
Yeah, yay.
Okay, Myers?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince? Douglas?
Yay.
Tribby?
The meeting will continue until morale improves.
Steel?
Yay.
Van Thayer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mission approved.
All right, thank you all for being here.